Hello. Welcome to the, what is it, September something fifteenth? Zoning Board of Appeals. We, our very first application is actually continued. They want to move to continue anyway. So if you want it, so if anybody's here on 133 Glades Road, we're going to deal with that first then. That's all you hear.
Michael McCarron of 133 Glades Road, Insituate, requests a special permit finding pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to enclose a first level porch and add a second story open deck over that enclosure on the front of the existing dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at 133 Glades Road, Insituate. Assessors map, five block, three parcel, two.
Okay. And we have a letter from them seeking a continuance on that? Until when?
Until October.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to continue application until, what was it, October, you said? October 20th?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we have several people representing several people tonight, and I think there's a little cross. Paul, you're, Paul's here on what? 144 Turner Road?
No.
You're not here on that?
On 94 Marion Road.
Oh, you're on 94 Marion Road.
69 Jericho Road.
Okay. And Jeff, you're on who?
The 140, the Turner Road application, as well as the Jericho Road application.
Okay. So somebody's, you know, if we moved around, somebody else, you know what I mean? So I think we'll just take them in order, if that's okay.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. So, hello? So we're going to start with 144 Turner Road then.
Gardener and Maureen Olson of 144 Turner Road, Insituate, requests a special permit finding and/or any other related appeals in the area. In accordance with Insituate zoning bylaws and/or Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, construct approximately 26.5-foot addition onto a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the R3 zone and floodplain and watershed protection overlaying district, which additions will increase the gross habitable floor space area by more than 20 percent at home located at 144 Turner Road, Insituate. Assessors map, 40 block, two parcel, two.
Hello?
Hi. Who are you? Jeff DeLeese at Orinberger DeLeese &amp; Harris. I'm here with Jeff Hassett of Morse Engineering, as well as my clients, Maureen and Gardener Olson. Why don't you guys just put your hands up?
Hello?
So, this is a pretty straightforward one.
I always worry when you say.
I always try to get that in, because I feel like I'm channeling to you guys.
Okay.
No, we have a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. It is non-conforming on the southerly sideline, and essentially, the Olsons, there's an existing deck off the rear of the house, and what they're proposing to do is basically utilize a portion of that deck for this 10 by 26 and a half foot addition. The property is in the overlay flood zone, so we're also seeking a special permit, and we think that we meet the criteria of section, I think it's what, 470.6F is my recollection? So, you know, with that, oh, additionally, I received a letter today from the neighbor on that side of the property, Catherine McNiff, in support of the project. So, this just came in, and I just wanted to submit it to the filing, literally. I just received it this afternoon at 4:30.
Okay.
So, if you guys are interested.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So if you'd like to hear from Jeff, or I'm more than happy to just take questions, if you have any?
Okay. Sure.
The property is actually, the house is presently raised on pilings, and the addition will also be raised on pilings for what it's worth. I guess the only thing I would add is currently, as far as the floodplain, on the effective floodplain map, it's in an AO two-foot depth zone. On the preliminary map, it's an AE16. So the proposed addition will match the first floor, which is up at 16.3. So it's six feet above the ground, and it's in, that complies with the flood maps.
That would be conservation.
Okay.
One additional item is, the Olsons have already been before the Conservation Commission.
I was wondering about that.
And the hearings went fine, without any hiccups. The board will be signing an order next week.
Okay. Okay. The only thing, and I was trying to, and hopefully Bob can shed light on that. So this lot kind of stair steps, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Bob, how is, how is that little 10-foot stair step effect an analysis of the rear lot line?
Yeah, that's a very good question. I'm not sure, Sarah, that I can answer it fully. I had brought that up to Mr. DeLeese as an issue, or at least a question that I had, and I don't know if he has had any chance to look into the, into the matter and find out if there's precedent or any kind of, sort of, rule that we can follow on that.
Yeah. If you want to go, John, but you can't, you know, you could, I, my opinion on this is that you can only have a rear yard setback from a particular spot. You can't have multiple rear yard setbacks. So, the way I would treat that is as a side yard. But I have not seen any precedent on that.
Okay.
Especially the way that sidewall line then continues further to the rear.
All right. So a rear yard setback, and this is A3, correct? I mean, R3.
A3.
And a rear yard setback is supposed to be 20 feet, correct?
Correct.
And so, what you haven't given us, Jeff, this Jeff, is what the rear, the current rear yard setback is of the existing structure, just from this little stair step here. And can you tell me what that is?
19.6.
92 feet.
Not, no.
The short one is 19.6 feet, because it's a 10-foot addition.
Okay. And you, when you figure those, you don't figure any walls or anything like that, right?
No. And the only thing I'd say about that is, if, of course, you're rounding the number of 9.6, you've got, you've got.
We can't do that. You can't do that, and work like that. So.
No, but it, doesn't it help you? It's non-conforming.
It really helps you, I think.
It helps you to be non-conforming.
Yeah, because it's, it's increasing a pre-existing non-conformity.
Yeah.
So I think, I think you're lucky.
Yeah.
I think you'd be, huh?
As opposed to instituting a new non-conformity.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So, if you look at it that way, in an abundance of caution, you know, I mean, I think, I don't know the answer of which we're supposed to do.
Why wouldn't you take the, in order to protect the purposes of the zoning bylaw, why wouldn't you take the least number to be operative? Because here we've got three different numbers that are potentially the rear.
Well, actually.
Prefer we view it as a side.
No, I understand that. My question is, you know, I mean, shouldn't we be looking at the?
Six one-half dozen the other. I think that they, you know, whether it's a pre-existing non-conformity off the rear or not, I mean, either, either way, I think kind of gets you, you know, where you need to go, if that's the analysis that the board wants to do.
I don't, I don't think it does, to tell you the truth.
It seems to me you go straight back, when you're looking at, at the addition, you go straight back to, until you hit the rear of the lot line. And here, it's, from the proposed addition, it's 9.6 feet.
Right.
It's not 98 feet, or whatever it is that you're going back, because you'd have to jog over here in order to get, get that number straight back, so.
So if you calculate that as the rear setback, it, as it exists, it's non-conforming, with the 19.6 rear setback?
And you're asking us to increase the non-conformity.
You're asking, as opposed to creating a new non-conformity, which?
Right.
I don't think, I don't think we can do.
Right. If indeed that is a rear law line, which it seems like there's a little difference of opinions going on.
Better to be a rear lot line than a sideline.
Well, the other thing, if you took that side lot line, and say it wasn't 90 degrees, say it was 10 degrees, it would, what would it be then? Or you look to the other side, there you have some, the job on the other side. I think you have to, the true rear lot line seems to be Meadows Lane or Meadows Road.
That was going to be my argument, because I was following along with what Jeff was saying, that you have to perceive that, that extension from Turner to Meadows as the sideline, even though it takes an unusual shape.
Yes.
It's still the sideline of the lot. It's not the rear line of the lot. I don't care that it's the first, first perpendicular or parallel.
Jog.
Place that they, that you reach when you get, when you're going backwards, when you're going back in the lot. If that was just angled, as you said, maybe angled 5 degrees, if it was angled 30 degrees, it was angled 40 degrees, at what point does it become a rear line? When it gets to 90 degrees, or when it gets to 89?
Well, could it go beyond 90?
Or could it go beyond 90 and come back out?
That's why I've been, you can't.
I have no problem calling it a sideline.
Gray area, clearly.
But I could also argue that it is a rear line, in order to establish that there's a pre-existing non-conformity in the rear line. In either case, I think what the applicant's asking to do is appropriate to the neighborhood, appropriate to the property. There, we have a letter from the abutter, whose land is most directly affected, the McNiffs, that it's, that they're in agreement that this is an acceptable movement. They could resolve the whole rear line setback issue, if that's what we're talking about, by seeing if they could acquire some of the land of the, of the McNiffs. But why should they have to go through that?
Right.
I mean, this is, this is, this is the Barker Farm. This is a development that was built, put together in, I think, I don't even know if the date's on it, but I believe it was 1911 that the Barker Farm was divided, which includes this whole area and Lighthouse Point and other areas that were created at that same time out of the old Barker Farm.
Which, on that little, which lot is this, on that little lot plan of all the subdivisions?
I'll list it in there. Lot 47 on plan and title Barker Farm Lots, recorded in the Plymouth County, so 47.
Yeah. Well, it's not just 47, because 47 is a rectangular lot, so you can't really say that this lot was.
Parcel 2 is the, is land that is adjoining northwesterly boundary of 47. It's probably not on the plan. It's the area that's not.
No, I mean, you, part of it was created when this plan was, but clearly not the entire lot was created. So, you know, we don't know when the entire lot was created. So to look at it as from 1911, or whatever it was.
I'm simply saying this is an ancient, this is a very old subdivision. It's not something that was.
It is an old subdivision, but.
Done recently, and what we're here to do is to help give the people.
I don't have any problem with that, Ed, but I just don't think you can look at this as, this is clearly not a lot that was created anciently. We don't know when this lot was created.
The structure is on the, is on 47.
1930. The structure's on 1930, but we have to consider the whole lot.
Just to clarify, folks, it's Plan Book 1.
Yeah.
In, in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds.
So is that pretty old?
I can't say off the top of my head what that is, but it's pretty old.
Well, it's got a lot of plans, though, so clearly there are some issues that have been changed, so.
Our, this lot is, is a lot on Plan Book 1.
Right. But it's got an addition, so that changes the, it makes a big difference.
The structure is on that lot.
Doesn't matter.
Not on the addition of the lot, not on, of course, that's been connected to it.
We just took a look at the deed, and the rear lot is shown on a plan from 1945.
Okay. So, I mean, it predates zoning, and I think we'd be, I think we'd be better off to look at it as a rear lot line and a pre-existing, because then you really cover your basis. Okay? So, I don't have any problem with it, but I do think we, I do think we should reference it as a, you know.
Well, I think, given the uncertainty, I'd reference it as both ways.
Yeah. I think that's a good way.
Rear slash sideline.
sideline, either way.
Either way, they're non-conformity, a non-conforming, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that would protect you, I think, the best.
Yeah. I appreciate that, and I'd be happy to.
And just one question, which is probably obvious and doesn't make any difference, but you're going from 4.6 to 4.4.
It's also increasing.
On the actual sideline to, to keep everything square, I assume. Is that right?
Exactly, that's exactly it, because that's exactly where the corner of the, of the deck is, and the way I, the way I view that is, it's, it's de minimis, because you already, you already have, yeah, you already have a, it's an extension of an existing, pre-existing non-conformity.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I think.
So, in any event, we're, we're going to be increasing a pre-existing non-conformity?
That's right.
Okay.
Both rear and side.
Yeah.
If you look at it that way. And I'm, I'd be happy to draft the decision in, in the spirit of how we're discussing this.
That's good. All right. Bob, do you have anything else to add?
No, in terms of zoning, without the regulations in front of me, there could possibly be a problem in elevation if the dwelling is now in an AE16, according to the 2016 mapping. I believe the regulation is that the floor level needs to be one foot above. Now, that may only be for entirely new construction, as opposed to additions, so I need to check that. But that'll come up when the proponent comes in for a building permit.
Okay. So not our issue, but just to alert them that you may have an issue on that?
Possibly.
Okay. All right. Does anybody, the audience, wish to be heard on this application? Any further discussion from the board? Do we have a motion?
Sure.
It's a gale motion. You're up.
I'm up again. On the motion for a special permit at 144 Turner Road, Insituate, I move to find that the, I move that the board find that the existing property is pre-existing non-conforming as to.
Everything.
Lot area is, is not.
I think it's every single zoning character.
Everything? As to everything?
No, except, well, except for sidelines, for, so the wester, easterly sideline is conforming.
Yeah, but it's still a side, so you get.
Oh, no, it's not conforming, is it? Yeah, you're right.
Literally everything.
748.
Okay. Non-conforming both as to the lot and as to the structure's dimensions, that the proposed addition will increase minimally the sideline from 4.6 to 4.4 feet, and that the rear or side, same sideline will also be, the non-conformity there will also be increased, but that I find that both increases in the non-conformities will not be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the existing structure, and that the special permit be granted.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All excited, yay!
One down.
Very good.
We don't typically see that much celebration. That's nice.
I know, I know. I hope the rest of the night goes as well.
We'll have more of that.
I know. We'll see. Okay.
There's someone. But on the plane. Now, my question on this one is about, is about height.
Are they ready?
Yeah.
This is a good lot.
Alfred Boyajin of 94 Marion Road, Insituate.
Can we shut the back door? Thank you. Thank you.
Request a special permit finding pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and/or Section 8, 10, Form 3A of the Insituate zoning bylaw, to construct an addition and to increase the gross floor area of the dwelling by 102 percent on a pre-existing non-conforming lot of 94 Marion Road, Insituate. Assessors map, 40 block, 11, parcel 3.
Thank you.
Hi, Paul.
Thank you. My name is Paul Miro from Ross Engineering Company, representing the owner and applicant, the progress, Mr. Kelford Boyajin, who resides at 94 Marion Road. The existing lot is outlined in yellow. It's a, it's a non-conforming lot, because it has less than 100 feet of frontage and less than 10,000 square feet of land area. It has 4,750 square feet. This proposal was to increase the gross floor area of the existing dwelling by 102 percent. This plan, as well as the zoning chart, shows that all of the setbacks, the front yard, the side yard, and the rear yard, will, will be conforming. The right yard is at 7.8, which is slightly under the eight feet it is required, but that is not changing. The plan is to pick the house up vertically, and there's an existing open deck in the front of the house and on the left side of it, which would be enclosed and become our living space, and at the rear of the house could be a small addition to the house in this area here. The rear yard setback is, that's required is 20 feet. We're proposing 23.7. The left side yard would be 10.5, 10, I'm sorry, 10.6, which is greater than the eight foot, which is required. The average setback of the homes within 200 feet of this lot shows a calculation of 27.0 feet. We're proposing 27.3 feet.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we could start right with that one, because I think that's an area of contention for me, and I just don't, I want to talk to you about that. So, you've included Kenneth Road. The bylaw says on the, on the same street, so why do you get Kenneth Road?
The bylaw says is, you go 200 feet from each corner in each direction or to the nearest intersecting street. So, the nearest intersecting street would be Ocean Side Drive. We could include that.
Okay.
You know, once you get to one, if you're on a corner lot, then you can only go in one direction, and that'd be a one-way intersecting street.
I think you'll find that Kenneth Road, that 71 goes right through between Kenneth and Marion. It's actually fronts on Marion, but it has Kenneth as.
The street address is Kenneth, but the, it's, it fronts on Marion, so it still counts.
The lots go, the lots between Marion and Kenneth, some of them go right through to Kenneth. The backyard is in, on Kenneth.
Oh.
In this case, it's given, given Kenneth address.
Okay.
But it's actually fronting on Marion. Your measurement is from Marion, correct?
Pardon?
Your measurement, your front, your setback is from Marion or from Kenneth? For that, for 71 Kenneth?
Okay.
For 71, 71 Kenneth?
Number 71 Kenneth, that's this lot over here, that goes all the way through. The rear of that house is more than 30 feet from Marion Road, so we use 30 feet in the calculation.
You use 30 feet, because that's what the bylaw says you have to use, I think. Right.
The reason it's called Kenneth is because it's.
Well, it's still, it's still fronts on, I mean, I, my, my, I know you guys are shaking your heads at me, but I would just like, I don't know the answer to it, I just would like to have Bob's analysis of whether or not you use Kenneth Road.
I don't think it really hurts the calculations either way. You're using the maximum setback for that address.
It was undeveloped.
According to the zoning bylaw, so.
Kind of, kind of cancels it out, right?
Yeah, exactly right.
It puts it closer, actually. If you took it out.
It would help him if he didn't. It would help him if you took it out.
It actually would help the average, because you take that 30 feet, which is slightly larger than the average, out of the equation.
But I agree with you, Sarah. If, if it helped them, I, I'd feel that it shouldn't be in there. It doesn't front. I have to go back to the section, but I think it's looking for.
It's page 92 of the bylaw.
Houses that front.
Right.
But if the lot were undeveloped at all.
Right.
It would be 30 feet.
It would be 30 feet.
And it would be able to be developed.
Right.
With an address assigned, as, it just depends on which, which direction the house was when it was.
Right, front door, back.
Yeah, but, the counter to that is, it's a non-conforming lot, so they'd need a permit to change their address, wouldn't they? To get frontage on a different street? Or could you just go back and forth?
I don't know.
Well, they already have.
I think from, I think the reason addresses are assigned is for ease of location, for fire and safety, not for.
We'll burn that bridge when we get to it, right?
Not for legal description.
Yeah.
You know, we go to meets and bounds, and we talk about legal description, and this lot, this lot fronts on Marion, so therefore it's usable.
That doesn't make a difference here.
The bylaw doesn't talk about which building fronts on it. It talks about.
Legal access from a way.
It talks about the line of the buildings, buildings on the same side thereof between two intersecting streets.
Right.
So the building in question is this one here, so you go 200 feet each way, and you locate the buildings on the same side of Marion Road as, as the subject lot.
Oh, I don't know. I don't, I don't read it as going 200 feet each direction. I think it's.
It says within 200 feet of the lot in question, or.
Oh, no. All right, all right, right.
Since on the street thereof, between two intersecting streets, and within 200 feet of the lot in question.
Okay.
So if there was an intersecting street 400 feet away, I couldn't go 400 feet.
That's true.
This limit is made at 200 feet in each direction.
Okay.
It talks about the buildings on the same side of the street as the subject property.
Okay. So how do you, so now explain to me how you get Ocean Side on there? What, because I don't, you don't, you haven't provided a plan, Paul, to, to show me where Ocean Side sits in relationship to this.
There's a, there's a house on the corner of Ocean Side and Marion Road, and the building fronts on.
And it's, and again, he has provided a plan, there's a plan in the packet.
With, with.
Again, a subdivision.
It talks about.
It's a land registered.
Same side of the street, which is Marion Road.
But the lot at the corner is fronts on Ocean Side, so that's the address that's given, so you're describing it by address, not by the meets and bounds.
It's on the same side of the street as the subject property.
Correct. And you could certainly have described the property by its land court title or its book and page, but you're using the addresses to make it easy and convenient on the plan.
So show, show me on this, where is, yeah, that doesn't help me as much as this does. Is that, is this the, the house on Ocean Side that you're using?
Yes.
Okay. And so, your calculation is from Marion to, to the building?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because this building is on the same side of the street as the subject house.
Yep. And so, okay, so that's how you picked this up?
No.
You didn't take, you didn't take the frontage on Ocean Side, you took the distance?
No, because the bylaw says the same side of the street, which is Marion Road.
Okay.
The probable filming.
Okay. All right. Sorry to, I thought we, since we're at that, we could just kind of deal with that.
So, I did provide a zoning chart, and what it shows is that when this is constructed, it'd be the required setbacks. The other thing they're doing is, the reason he's going to pick the first floor up is that this is not in a FEMA flood zone under the proposed maps, or the one from 2012. However, in reality, what happens is, the elevation of the street is at 15.5, and he's got a garage out here at 14. The water does come up in some of the storms, and it comes down here and floods the basement. So the plan is to pick. So, the plan is to pick the first floor up and pick this existing cellar floor up as well as the garage floor, so it'll be slightly higher than the street, so he doesn't get the flooding. There is no requirement to do that, because he's not in a FEMA flood zone, but it does make sense to do that, so he doesn't have the flooding in the basement area anymore. There's architectural plans that I submitted. There's an architect that was made by the homeowner. And sheet, the architectural plan is showing that the roof height, the peak of the building is 33 feet five and three quarters, which is well within the width of the, of 45 feet high, 35 feet high, as described in the zoning bylaw. Also, there's only an increase of 10% to the previous area, which is less than the 25% threshold that would require a stormwater designed to be submitted to the planning board. So, I think with that, I'll end my presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Do you have a question to answer me?
I do, about height. I believe it's 35 feet or three stories, whichever is lower.
Which was the lowest?
Yes.
I don't know. Bob?
We're in, we're in R...
620.
R3. Three stories or 35 feet, whichever is lower.
Uh, which, what page is that on the...
On page 91 of the 2015 code, Section 620.1.
Correct.
This is true.
So, we've got four.
Yeah, that was, it was something that jumped out at me.
But the 38 feet is measured to the ridge, and we measured...
35 is typically the limit between the ridge and the eve, so be halfway between the eve and the ridge.
So, if I'm, this is very small, and I'd have to get a new prescription, but isn't it saying 38?
This is 30.
No.
On sheet 821, it shows...
35 and three quarters.
It shows here that it would be 33, 35 and three quarters, just to the peak of the roof.
Right, so we really only want to measure it to the halfway up, halfway between the...
Okay.
And that, so it comes out less than 35 feet, or three stories, so 30, three stories is the allowed amount.
Well, what's that little...
So, this is just something where I'd like clarification. I see three stories and an attic here. That's just my interpretation.
Right.
But three stories would mean three stories of habitable space. The attic would not be habitable space.
So, the owner could not come back in and get a building permit to re...
To finish out the attic and make habitable space there? Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so what?
Even though we have a trapdoor to a deck above the attic, does that make a difference?
No.
Okay.
That would be habitable space.
Not in my mind.
Okay. Because it's an outdoor deck, treated just like a deck on the side of the house would be. Okay. So, to clarify the general interpretation of the code, it's three and a half stories or 35 feet, whatever is, whichever is lower, in practice.
Again, my view is it's three stories of habitable space.
Okay, that's...
The attic is a product of the roof shape. If it were a flat roof, then it'd be a different discussion.
That's what I wanted to understand.
Well, and what about this little thing here?
That's a widow's walk that, really, it's not habitable space, no.
Okay.
And you're, but catching the 35 feet is showing 35 too, but that's to the ridge, not to the midpoint of the, between the eve and the ridge.
But it's actually, it's under 35. It's 33 feet, five and three quarter inches. So, I think, so they're good. Right. And that's to the peak. No, so I'm just saying, 35 isn't even in play.
Okay.
And now, does that include, you know, was the measurement from the existing ground or the new ground? Are they elevating the ground now a couple feet?
It's from the average finished grade around the house.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, the increasing the finished grade as it sits now? Or is it finished grade, because I know you said you're raising the first, you're raising the first floor two feet of the garage level.
What he's doing is, he's going to pick the garage, I mean, he's going to pick the garage floor up.
Right.
He's picking it out of the hole. Actually, the grade is not going to change.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
He's raising the hole.
Right.
I'm just picking it up in here about a foot, 18 inches, so the ground will slope back to the street instead of the water coming in. He's got a catch basin right here that'll...
I saw that on the photos.
13.9, and the street's at 15.5.
Right.
So, when these storms come in, water comes in, fills up part of the basement.
So, aside from the driveway, there's no fill coming in around there?
No, it would just stay away. He's only got 10 feet here and 7.8 feet there. Now, there's no proposed grade here in front of it.
Any other questions of the board right now? Bob, any questions or comments?
No, not really. The only thing I'd say is, again, it may become a question that we ask at the building permit stage, whether or not this is equipped as a, either actual or potential accessory dwelling. Plans do show some sort of a kitchen setup, possibly, that in the basement.
Oh, good catch. I guess I didn't look.
Unless these are plans, these are the ones I've looked at.
And what...
But two kitchens do not make an accessory dwelling?
Not necessarily.
Depends on the intent and how they're used, I guess, huh?
I'm Italian. You need three more kitchens just out of a house.
It actually doesn't have to do with the intent. Kitchen is not constituted dwelling.
It would not be the ZBA's call, one way or another. Let's unsettle that issue.
Well, we've had some history of multiple kitchens and sort of being utilized in some structures as multiple dwellings, accessory dwellings that way. So, that's why there's a great deal of caution in what's being approved, I think, so. But is that something you basically have to deal with?
I would refer plans coming across my desk to the town planner for her evaluation. It's the planning board that gives the permits for an accessory dwelling.
Okay.
It doesn't matter how the structure is built. It's how it's being used, and if a party starts to use a structure as an accessory dwelling without obtaining a building permit, accessory dwellings permit from the planning board, they're in violation of zoning, and therefore they can be required to modify their use.
That's correct.
And perhaps modify the structure to prohibit it being used in that way in the future.
Right. The trigger point for this would be a range with an oven, you know, as opposed to a hot plate and a microwave or something. So, it's a little bit of gray area. There's no range shown here, so I merely bring that up as a sort of cautionary consideration.
Okay.
For the applicant's consideration.
Exactly.
Well, and the neighbors?
I mean, it is a large, fairly large home, a small lot.
It is, but unfortunately, Siguacan does not have a lot ratio bylaw, so... Any other comments? Bob? Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this? Yes, ma'am? Okay, first, I'm sorry. If you want to speak, if you could just state your, oh, that's okay. State your name and address nice and clearly, because Annie writes everything down, and then address all your questions to the board.
My name is Ellen Palain. My family owns a property at 80 Marion Road.
Okay.
Which is, and we've had it since 65. So, we've been there for a while. Some of my questions, I believe it's owned for a single residence. Oh, what I was hoping to find out was where the lion's den is connected to that diagram that he wants to add to, because that is a multiple residence, and it's kind of an eyesore there.
I'm a little confused. The present, the present building is multiple residence?
The one right beside it that he owns.
That who owns?
Mr. Boyajin.
Oh, oh, and what number is that you're telling me is a multiple residence? Is it 92?
If you look at the house he wants to build...
Yeah.
Right to the right, and it's four levels, and it's three or four different levels, and it's used with multiple residences.
Okay. That would be an issue for, it's not an issue for us tonight. That fact, or that, you know, concern that you have, that would be something you would have to talk to Mr. Vogel about later.
My question is, where's Lion's Den in terms of, that's what it's called, in terms of this residence that's trying to be...
The Lion's Den?
That's what they call the multiple residence.
The name of the house.
Oh.
It would be to the left.
There's an actual sign.
I don't know. Paul, can you point out?
This is, it's the house at number 92 on our plan.
Okay, so that's the one. Could you just show her on the plan, so she understands? Thank you.
This is the house you're talking about?
On Marion Road right beside it?
Yes, this is the house. This is the house we're talking about this evening.
It's right next door.
This is the one...
So, he's going to get a huge bit of that property to do what he wants with?
Well, he's getting a permit to do this, and he's presented plans, and so that's what he's looking to do. Yes.
I wonder how we got the plans to get a multiple residence and a single residence.
You're talking about 92 now?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're not here to talk about 92. 92 is a separate issue, and if you have to talk about, if you want to talk about that, I suggest you go see...
But I'm sorry, I don't need to, but in a way, it is connected, because if you're out there and you're looking at that, and then you see what this is going to be right beside it.
Right.
That is connected, because it's a huge chunk. It's going to be a huge property and high, and it's going to just take away from everybody else around it.
Well, it certainly was, it's certainly within the heights requirements of the bylaw.
Got to be barely.
Well, barely is still within, you know.
And it's a separate property. It may be owned by the same family or even the same individuals, but it's two different properties, two different structures. Each is protected under our bylaws as individual, they can't be physically connected, the two structures.
It's not.
But the two different, the two lots are two different lots, and they can be developed independently.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, ladies. Can you, we just can't hear. It's being recorded, and it just makes a very muddy record. Appreciate it.
I realize I'm not in a butter, for the first, I'm not in a butter.
You have standing here, that's fine. You have standing.
But I wasn't notified of this, of that Lion's Den thing, because I certainly would have come down for that.
Yeah.
That wasn't, isn't before us tonight, and we don't, we don't have any information to share with you about that.
I guess I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else want to be heard on this? Yes, sir.
I'm Mark Helmacher. I live across the street, 95 Marion Road, and I have some things to bring up to you. Okay, I sit here?
Help yourself.
The first thing I want to address is the catch basin in the driveway. That catch basin has been there since before the 60s, and the town is currently investigating now why Mr. Boyajin removed a town drain from his driveway, which he did last October, November. After doing that, he then has filled in the driveway with loose gravel and grade without any notice or whatever. I notified the town about the drain in February. I went to conservation. They said that the fact he's out of the flood zone, even though he just previously applied last summer to get FEMA funds for being in the flood zone, he was found to be out of the flood zone and unable to raise his house at that time. After that final decision in October or November, Mr. Boyajin had a contractor come over and remove that town drain and fill in his driveway up to a level above the street. So, then when there's any water precipitation or any flooding or anything like that, that drain is no longer useful.
Can you, can you help me, Mark? You're saying a town drain on private property. Is there an easement that gives the town rights to that, correct?
I notified the town, okay, in February. That was passed from the engineering's office to Sean.
I understand, but I'm asking you...
Please, wait a minute. Gentlemen, Mr. Boyajin, would you please just, if you have something to say to your neighbor there, take it outside, because we're trying to hear, and you'll have a chance to speak, so we're happy to hear what you have to say.
If it's a town drain, I would expect the town needs to have an easement in order to access it.
And that's where I'm at. They are still investigating this because of the fact...
Okay, so let's not represent it as a town drain. The drain on his property was removed, but I don't...
No, it's a town drain because the town highway superintendent expected it, okay, and told me in July that it's the town, it's a town drain. They just couldn't find any paperwork yet because of the maps and everything else and all the drawings and all that kind of stuff. They just can't find it because it's so old.
Is it a catch basin that drains the town drain?
I have no idea.
Catch basin appears to be on his property.
It is on his, there's no doubt it's on his property. It's down his driveway, but it's been used all this time for drainage from the street. There's no ridge line across his driveway. It's always slowed down there to catch some, whatever. I don't know where it goes, but in Fe, in July, Mr. Mike Breen told me it was a town drain. I told him that sooner or later, there's going to be some kind of a building thing going up, and that, you know, hopefully they would address it in a, you know, timely manner. As of today, I went to see Mr. McCafferty on Tuesday and asked for an update, because Mr. Breen told me that he was going to notify him about having a letter go out about the town drain being removed, the fill being applied to his driveway without any permits or whatever has to happen. And they are still, at this time, as of 5:30, still haven't finished their investigation as to, hey, when it went in, where it goes, okay, and how it goes. That was going to be accomplished another month or two, when they're coming down the same street, and with the scopes to go through all the drainage and whatever, determine what's going on. The only way they told me that you can be able to really tell for sure what's going on is because the town's paperwork and all their maps only go back as far as 1976. So, no one knows when it was put in. The house that they're talking about is 1912 or 1909 it was built. No one knows, you know, when the road got paved, when the driveway got put in, when the catch basin got there, where it was designed to go, or how it was designed to be. But right now, it's pulled, the driveway's filled in partially with stone next door, and there's no drainage down the driveway, and the catch basin sits in the driveway still to this day.
Mark, I'm still trying to understand. This is private property?
It is.
The town, unless it can show an easement for putting a drain on the private property, is possible that the owner of the property, as you say, 1912 or some other time, installed a drain and may have connected it to the town drainage system, perhaps without permission, perhaps with permission, but unless we have a document that says the town has a right to drain water onto his property, I don't see how...
Well, that's what I'm trying to tell you. The town is still trying to find that. Their paperwork and their current stuff goes back to 76, so until, let's see, do a title search.
But the title...
So, just to clarify, this lot's registered land?
Yes.
So, it would, if I had internet access here, I could tell you within minutes, and because it's registered land, a prescriptive easement, meaning the town acquiring an easement because they had a drain there over a certain period of time, is impossible because it's registered land. So, unless there is a filed easement that runs to the benefit of the town, which it would be very easy to tell, then the town doesn't have any rights in this drain.
But really kind of, isn't it more important, Bob, this really isn't our issue tonight? I mean, if there's a, if there's an issue with the drain, I think it's going to come up when a building permit is applied for, and is that, would you agree with that?
Yes, in the sense that, you know, everybody's got to sign off before a permit can be issued, and that in this case would include DPW.
Right. So, if they've got some legal issue, it'll come up.
It's also very typical, as John will know, in cases where the driveway slopes down and the garage is somewhat under, you know, below grade, to put an area drain right in front of the garage door, whether it's a trench drain or, you know, whatever. And those can drain into a pipe system, or they can simply be a drywall. Usually, in the old days, they were just drywells. You know, people didn't bother to pipe them. So, whether this is a town drain or not is, I guess we'll have to wait for the DPW to come up, but I would, I would kind of agree with Anthony. It seems unlikely that the town would have the right, not only to put a drain on someone's private property, but via that drain to induce water to come into and potentially flood someone's private property.
So we really don't know what's going on? I mean, that's an issue for DPW, but at the very least, it's a, that's an issue for another day. That doesn't really affect what he's, the relief he's seeking here tonight.
So he does, you do get a permit, he builds over this drain, it comes out to be a town drain, what's gonna happen then?
It's not gonna get that far. If there's an issue with the drain, it's gonna ha, it's gonna be determined at the time a building permit is applied for.
Well, it's an issue now, because he tells, he just told you that that area is semi-pervious as it is. It's not, because that stone has just been pushed over since last October.
He's not proposing to build over the drain, whether or not it's there. I don't believe the proposed improvements cover the drain either way.
No.
So...
It raises the grade at the drain, so, but they could certainly put the grade, the drain, but the grade is not going to allow the water to come onto his property, which is perfectly acceptable. If the town needs to drain Marion Road, it's the town's responsibility to drain Marion Road and not onto private property.
Okay.
Whether, whether the drain is valid there or not, I don't think our decision here has any bearing on it whatsoever. We're not approving improvements that would cover the drain.
Okay, well, the grade has been changed in the last six months.
It's on private property.
Okay, all right.
If the...
But I was, I was told by other people that you can't change the grade of your property if it affects the street or the neighboring the butters.
You can't, you can't discharge water onto other people's property, or, but the street, if the street's draining onto your property, you have a right to keep the water that's draining onto your property from the town, unless they have permission to do so, from draining onto your property.
Okay.
You're not adding water to the system. You're, you're avoiding their water from coming onto your land.
Right. But the raising of your property off the side of the street to cause the water flow to come back across the street is an issue.
Well, I think the other thing, the drain is in the way, so...
Forget the drain, okay? I'm talking about the fact he's raised up his, the grade on his property on a driveway that used to slope down, and now the grade is raised by six or seven inches of rock and stone, and he did, okay? And that currently prevents the streetman draining the way it used to drain, and the water flowing on, back to the opposite side of the road. Meaning my driveway, and the guy next to me, and the lady up the street.
Well, the town can't drain, I mean, I had this exact same, really, exact same issue at my, at my office on Old Country Way. The driveway was, you know, below the street grade, and the town was draining prop, trading water onto my property. So what the town came in and did, it built a Cape Cod burn? I think it was like, Cape Cod burn, because town doesn't have the right to allow street water to just discharge onto my property, so...
Unless it has an easement.
And there's no easement. And, and I think, you know, you're gonna find an easement under these circumstances, extremely rare, if ever, okay? It just doesn't make sense. But, yeah, the town really has an obligation to prevent street runoff onto this particular property.
So what section of the town has an obligation to prevent the opposite side of people living there?
People, everybody, well, the same thing.
From having, from having waters that were drained in one way now be, you know, pushed back the way they are because the grade was...
Well, and if it drains onto your property, you can go knocking on Mr. McCafferty's door and say, "We got a problem here. Street water is now draining onto mine," and maybe you'll end up with a Cape Cod burn, and everybody will be happy.
Okay. The other thing is, this is what the neighbors are trying to prevent. This is Mr. Boyage's property in 92.
Right.
Okay?
Which is not before us.
Right.
It's not, but it is, because of the fact that he went through all of your, your buildings and codes and everything else, and he built this sucker, and then afterwards told it was too tall, okay, he managed to subvert the bylaw by technicality, erecting a barrier wall and bringing the elevation up to the bottom of the porch, above the basement downstairs. So then it technically falls into your height requirement after the grade was raised up almost four feet.
You know, again, we don't, we don't mean to seem unsympathetic to the issue. I know there's been a lot of issues regarding this particular property. The problem with it is, this is not before us. This is, if this project gets approved, this is what he's got to build. And if he builds something other than this, he can, you know, he can be, whatever, fined, whatever, you can, the, the town can tell him to tear it down. And believe me, there have been cases in situ that have gone all the way to the State Supreme Court, and somebody had to tear something down because they've done something improper.
We're trying to address the issue before this gets built.
Yeah, and you know what? And this is addressing the issue. That's what I'm trying to tell you, but...
Once he builds that...
Right.
Okay, he's not gonna be able to get it as high as this and then bring in another structure.
He's not building it as high as this. This is all he can build. He can't build anything different without coming back.
Well, we're not, we're not necessarily, this is a proposed structure. He could get a building permit to build a legal structure on the lot within the footprints of what we're agreeing to.
Well, this is, we typically refer to this.
We can refer to it, but again, he wouldn't have to come back before us to build a structure of a different, of a slightly different, of a slightly different design.
That's how the house looked.
Right. And we have pictures of that, right?
You don't have, do you have current pictures of all the...
We have those, yep.
But you have a current picture of the property with all the driveway filled in, and now it's level with the street, and the catch basin that was in there is now sitting on top of his driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got that up there.
No, you don't have a current picture. That's not it. See all this here? This is, this driveway is now level, all filled in and level with the property over here.
I mean, the only thing I can tell you is, again, if there's some, I don't know what, I don't know what, what if any bylaw he has, if any, he has violated by what he's done, but it's not an issue for us tonight.
Okay.
You know?
The other thing is, too, is that in 2009, they came before you to try and purchase a property across the street that was known as 43 Marion Road.
Okay, and you know what? I'm sorry, but I've gotta stop you, because we're not here to talk about 43 Marion Road either, you know?
Yes, I tried, but they came before you, well, it's an issue because...
I'm sorry, why is it, tell me why it's an issue?
Mr. Maravito and his group gave you a plan stipulated, they swore to, that the Marion Road footprint was 40 feet wide.
We have a certified plot plan here, which is certified, stamped by a registered surveyor that it's 50 feet wide. It's 50 feet wide. We don't have anything...
What's 50 feet wide?
This Marion Road parcel, parcel. If you're talking about anything other than this parcel, it's before us.
He's talking about the road.
He's questioning the right of way.
Yeah, but, and that's not an issue for us either.
Well, it cannot be an issue if you have to measure off the roadway.
Because this is the only, this is the only measurement on the road that we have to worry about.
And it's a public 30-foot way. It's what is represented to us by a registered landsurver.
And who's that?
Mr. Maravito.
If you're questioning his, if you're questioning his credentials...
I am not. I'm just trying to propose a plan that in 19...
It has nothing to do with what's before us.
Well, same Mr. Maravito gave you a plot plan.
Are you questioning Mr. Maravito?
I'm asking why he submitted...
Do you want to bring it up with the Massachusetts Registry?
No, you know what? No, 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 we are not going there, okay? We are not going there about bringing anybody before a board of registration.
I didn't say that.
Okay? This, the, what was ever represented as the width of Marion Road, I don't care how many years ago, is not an issue here tonight. If you would like to address any further issues regarding this particular piece of property, we are very happy to hear you. We're very happy to address your concerns, and if it's something that we can find out more information for you, or we can explain something for you, we're happy to do that. It is very clear that there are issues in the neighborhood regarding this particular owner. Let me just say that. We got it, okay? It's very clear. But before us tonight is an application regarding one particular lot in that neighborhood. And we haven't voted on it yet. We're, we're waiting to hear from, you know, you and your neighbors, and anyone else who wants to be heard on this application, about the issues exactly around that. What may happen in the future is just not an issue for us. If he's granted a permit and he doesn't build in compliance with that permit, that's an issue for the building department. And that's an issue that can have extremely serious consequences for the owner, to the point of having his, his structure taken down. I assure you, it happens in this Commonwealth, it's happened in this town. So if for some reason he thinks he's gonna build something different than what he's proposed and gets authority for, I can tell you, sooner or later, justice will call.
And I understand that, but...
Sarah, I'm sorry, just, it appeared for a second that, in the beginning, we did get off track talking about other properties. It appeared for a second that you were about to present evidence that called into question the width of Marion Road.
Yes.
I think that that calls into question a measurement on this plan, and I think we do have an obligation to at least take a look at that and see if it is, in fact, evidence that calls into question the width of Marion Road.
The Marion Road is not, is not reference, the width of it is not referenced here.
Referenced right under the words Marion Road. And if it is in fact...
Oh, 30-foot wide, okay?
And if it is, in fact, 40 feet wide, that is, I, now...
Why is that a concern?
I, I, I understand, and I question whether or not we're about to see evidence that calls it into question, but I do think we have an obligation to allow him to present it.
Well, this is my, this is my question to you. Why does it matter?
Because if it's...
It's an immaterial calculation on the map.
Is it if the sideline of the street is, in fact, 10 feet closer to the structure? Again, I question whether or not that's the case. But if the road is 10 feet wider, that affects the front yard setback.
Maybe it's just drawn wrong. Why, if he, this is, am I wrong, Paul, about, I mean, you explained it.
Now, the layout of Marion Road is 30 feet. That's from property line of the street to the other side of the property line of the street. If he thinks it's 40 feet, or someone thinks it's 30 feet, and there's 10 feet missing, this side is on the other side. As a registered landsurver, we go by a land court plan in the layout.
And, and I understand that, but if someone comes before us and wants to present evidence that a measurement on a plan is incorrect, I don't think we can dismiss that, just because they previously tried to bring forth some things that were not germane to the application.
I, I still don't get why, why it matters if Marion Road is 20 feet wide, 40 feet wide, or 30 feet wide.
If Marion Road is 10 feet closer to this home, the sideline of Marion Road, that's germane to this application. It affects the front yard setback.
You're talking about if this is down here?
Yes, yes. However unlikely that may be, I think it's our job to allow him to present that.
I don't think this, because Marion Road might be a little wider, doesn't, I mean, why do you ever come to a conclusion that it could mean that the lot line is 10 feet closer to the home?
Because it would be another nonconformity, it would be an increase in the non...
It would be a new nonconforming.
By 10 feet.
Yes, it's, again, I feel that that is unlikely, but I don't think we can start stopping people from presenting evidence because it's unlikely.
You have, you have some evidence at Marion Road?
I have a plot plan submitted to the planning board, or, where are we? Not planning board.
We're zoning.
Zoning board, okay? And for a hearing that you held on, in 2009, and this plot plan was done by professional engineers and landsurveyors, 683 Main Street, Norwell, Mass.
All right, why don't you bring it up?
Because this was a big issue back then, because of the fact that when they proposed this, and it's a 40-foot, what's it called, for the address here, this is, stretches, wrong one. Okay, November 24, 2009, Ross Engineering Company Incorporated, Certified Land Surveyors, Main Street, whatever.
Take a peek, Anthony, see what you think of it.
This here is Marion Road, because the issue was, for, being taken over the person of Mr. Boyage, Alfred, and on this thing certified by Mr. Ross Engineering, Marion Road, at 40 feet wide. Now, during that hearing, I contested it to be 30 feet, but I was told by the planning board, or zoning board, that the fact that the certified sheet presented before them, okay, meant that I was wrong, and it's certified, so they got it.
Okay.
So there's a main, says 40 feet.
94. And we're talking, this is, this is showing the property on the opposite side of the street. Do you agree with that? Because this is, we're talking about 94, and it's on this side of the street.
And 94 is right here.
Okay. All right, Paul, you wanna come and take a look? I personally...
That plan's wrong.
That plan's wrong because of...
That plan's wrong. I, I'm glad we saw it. That's important evidence. But we also have an evidence, a land court plan, that predates that. A land court plan, which the town and this lot would be bound by, which notes the entire length of Marion Road as 30 feet wide. That, that plan appears to me to be incorrect, and...
The submit is not the same for us, too.
I...
Oh, so the notation is wrong?
It's a scribner's error.
It's a scribner's error, because if you look at...
It's a scale, 30 feet.
Say it loud, so, Paul, so people...
I'm sorry. If you look at the bar scale, 30 feet is right here. That's 30 feet.
And then if you look at the land court plan, it states 30 feet on it.
You're absolutely right, there is an incorrect item within that plan.
Ocean Side Drive is 40 feet.
I, I understand.
When it got corrected here, they didn't change it.
I even see how the typo happened. I'm glad we looked at it. There's no doubt in my mind that Marion Road is 30 feet wide.
And there's no doubt in my mind it's 30 feet also. I'm just trying to show you that Mr. Boyage and Mr. Maravito, information changes from application to application.
Well, I don't think that's...
Yeah, I'm not ready for that job.
But I am gonna let his wife know that in, on November of 2009, he made a mistake, just in case he doesn't...
Well, he didn't, because I brought it up during the hearing and said that it was 30 feet, and they said they were gonna have to go by Mr. Maravito's drawings of 40 feet.
At scale of 30 feet, then.
It's, it's, we all make mistakes, and Lord knows.
Well, that's why we brought it up during the hearing, to make sure that the town's board, okay, were good, wanted to go off of 30 feet instead of 40 feet.
But it's a big jump to, to, which seems to be you're edging, if not directly accusing Mr. Maravito of providing misinformation for the benefit of this particular client.
Well, I'm sure the plan is submitted.
Innuendo.
During the hearing, okay, when it was, the discrepancy was brought up by myself, it's 30 feet, I was overruled by people because of the fact that he submitted a certified copy, and so it's 40 feet.
So, anything else we can help you with tonight?
Well, no, the neighbors just wanna make sure that what happened at 92 doesn't happen at 94.
And I, and I hope I've explained to you that, again, when there's, when there's a, if, if and when he gets a permit, you know, he gets a special permit tonight, and if and when he gets a building permit, you know, there are checks and balances in the building department to make sure that he builds it.
But you can address certain issues now, the fact that in your application process, you'll determine that he will not, after he gets an application to build it, will not be able to build it as high as the one at 92, and then bear, and then beat around the bylaw by bringing in another retaining wall and raising the, you know, the land up, like he did here, almost 4 feet.
Again, again, that, if and when something like that happens, you have to go to the building department and seek their help.
So we have to wait till he builds it all and come back to you?
Pretty much.
Really? Okay.
But you can't arrest someone before they speed.
The what?
You're gonna speed? We're gonna arrest you? You can't, you can't, he hasn't done anything wrong yet.
I think you might speed, so you're arrested.
And again, the plans they presented for 92 had nothing about the retaining wall or raising that grade up or anything like that.
Yeah, and again, that's something, that's not, that's something we can address.
In front of us now.
It was in front of you back in 2013, and you were on the board when he approved this.
Right, but you're asking me to remember, I'm telling you, like, what did I have for breakfast yesterday, much less, what did he present, what did he represent? We do our job at the hearing, we approve a particular, um, project with particular considerations, and if the builder, um, doesn't comply with that, that's not, that's not a battle that we fight, that's what the building department has to fight. And I, I couldn't even begin to discuss, I have no idea about the legalities of what happened, and, you know, it's a fight that is just not ours here tonight.
Don't you feel it's better to address all these issues?
Well, we think we have addressed issues.
The issues you're proposing are hypothetical, and in the future, as two of the board members just said, you can't arrest someone for speeding because you think they might.
Well, no, what I'm showing you is that, at ninety-two Marion Road, the plan he presented is not what he built.
It's irrelevant.
Or no, you're saying, wait till, wait till it happens.
We, we have no evidence that it will happen, we have no, no evidence that it's, that he plans to have it happen, whatever happened in the past, whether it's the same individual or not, it's not what's before us tonight. And frankly, I find it, that it's inappropriate to this line of testimony, which is impugning the reputation or the integrity of individuals in the room, and I just don't think it's appropriate, I think that you have to...
I'm not impugning any integrity at all, I'm just showing you what happened when Mr. Bariage tried to build on a different lot that he didn't even own, okay, and that got taken care of. The town granted, you know, permits or whatever, on a property they didn't even own, and it ended up, you know, having to have the heat butters go all the way through the conservation committee, their response was, sorry, okay, the zoning board approved the plans, we've got to go from there. So it ends up, it took me, you know, three years, all right, and many visits and money to the DEP, just only to find out that, um, they never owned the land, okay, the property was sold to somebody else.
The lands that's, the property before us has a land court document which indicates he owns the land that he's applying for the permit for.
So, he won't be able to build over the driveway?
He'll be able to build according to the plans that he's presented to us, if it's approved.
Okay, the plan that you have in front of you, which has all the measurements...
Right here, yeah.
And all these setbacks and everything else.
It'll be cited in our decision.
If you approve it.
If we approve it, yeah.
So, once it gets built, he can't add this to it, add anything to the garage in the back, or any more meters?
And you're, you're talking hypotheticals, I, that's again, you know, I, we're approving some, if we approve something, this is what he'll be stuck with, and people occasionally have to come back before us to get, you know, a permit altered, and there's a process for it. So, thank you.
So, one more, just one more thing.
Okay.
Look at that picture. So what I showed you about ninety-two will not be built on ninety-four.
It's not, it's not his plan to build that on ninety...
That's not before I said it.
No.
Other than that, it's all here.
Thank you, sorry if I lost my cool.
It's good. You're the only one that was present in 2009.
Um, yeah, hey, uh, yes, sir.
I'm Al, we've been from 58 Kenneth Road, and you've already said what this gentleman was concerned about, that you were aware of what happened in ninety-two, in the past. The reason why this room is filled is because we want to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Right.
And we're here simply, simply in full respect, to say, please, be aware, be aware that, um, you know, I hate to use this comparison because it's used by everyone, but we just don't want him invading Poland. He touched Czechoslovakia, he got away with it, nobody knew about it, nobody could say anything. He was told to stop building, and I saw, I saw builders up there, working on, working on the building. What am I going to do?
I don't know, can you call the police if somebody's viol, if, if there's a stop work order? Well, I'm, now, let's address that. If there's a stop work order, can you call the police?
If you're in violation of a stop work order, it's not a criminal matter, it's a civil matter, and we fine, and, you know, we try and work with our builders and our owners so that that doesn't happen. I, I wanted to get the opportunity to say there's one major additional checkpoint in this whole process, and that's when the actual plans get submitted to the building department for review. And deviations from what we're looking at tonight are going to be questioned very closely, and any deviations that even approach the envelope that's allowed by the zoning bylaws are going to be challenged, and, uh, basically not, not allowed. We have inspections at every point in the, in the construction, including the excavation, including the foundation, at that point, if there's a grade situation, and I wasn't in this position during the permitting and most of the construction of ninety-two, but I can tell you that whatever we permit at the department is going to be very closely coincident with what you're seeing here tonight, and what's built will be exactly what we permit no more.
Yeah, because we don't want to see him fined, we don't want, he, you know, he's got plenty of money, he can be fined thousands and thousands of dollars, someone stop him.
Well, like I said...
We just want to see, we just want to alert everyone, everyone wants to alert you, and you're all aware of that, he invaded Poland, Czechoslovakia, we don't want him invading Poland, we want everybody to pay attention to all the details, we want it, we don't want him to be fined or punished, we want it to not happen, and that's what we're counting on you to do.
Okay, well, don't count on us, we're only permitting, but, 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 no, yeah, well, we're the first step, but I'm telling you...
Pass it along, and the second step.
Right, and, and I think the antenna with the building department...
Yeah.
Are way high.
That's all.
Okay, and you out there have the eyes and ears, you can have access to the building plans, and if you see something you're concerned about, you know, there's a process for that. And, um, I hope for the peace of the neighborhood that Mr. Bariage stays true to the plans, and there isn't an issue going forward.
And also, when the, as part of our decision, we can restrict, and the square footage and stuff that is being listed in, in that as well, so that, if we decide to go with that, we could say what that is, so that could be referenced in the building as well.
I screamed at people driving down my street at sixty miles an hour when I had toddlers to slow down, that's not my job, it's your job.
It's not our job, we're not in the, we're not in the traffic enforcement business.
It's the government's job, it's the elected government's job, it's not my job to, to throw tennis balls at cars when I'm driving, or you scream, it's, it's the job of the government to make sure there's a child, please drive slowly, child, or, you know, or to call the police, but it's not our job to stand outside and measure and stuff like that.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that you are, but again, um...
I'm just letting you know that, that we really expect you...
It'll be watched, it'll be watched.
We really expect you to take care of us as a community.
But you, you've got to understand, the zoning board's job is to make sure that any plan that comes before it to be approved meets the letter of the zoning requirements, the zoning bylaw. We do not, the board does not then, and it's beyond our power to then go out and make sure that everybody has built in accordance with that, that's the building department's job, okay? So, so if, if you've got issues here, if there are issues here that you think that this plan is not in compliance as proposed with the town's bylaws, that's what we're here to talk about, okay?
But when you do give the permit out, you can put an addendum on that permit that's specific to what's been presented.
Yes.
The permit will be conditioned that it, that this needs to be built in accordance with the site plan that's been presented, which has very specific dimensions on it.
Well, I think it should be, I think it should be in accord with the project plans.
I'm not sure I agree with that, I think...
We do it all the time.
We don't do it all the time.
We'd like you to do it this time.
Fine, here's the challenge, okay, and I'm going to say this because it's important that the audience here understand that we would be protecting your rights as a land owner in the same way we protect everyone's rights as land owners. Uh, we're enforcing the bylaws, we do not have an, an architectural bylaw before us that we, that we're charged with enforcing. We can stipulate that it not exceed the square footage that is shown on the site plan, which is referenced in the site plan, because the square footage is within the zoning bylaws which we're charged to enforce. We are, we can impose restrictions on the setbacks, we can sometimes, when we have something before us, that an applicant is looking for unusual relief, and is offering an, a, something in compensation for that, we can cite in our decision that in consideration of this plan before us, it also incorporates that this shall not happen, which is kind of outside of the normal, you know, scheme.
That's exactly what we're here for.
Understood. But what is before us is a site plan and a proposed structure, residence, which I expect the applicant has every intention of building, but if, in the process of building it, or in reviewing the plans prior to submission for a building permit, they decide to move the bathroom around, it doesn't make sense for them to come back here to talk to us, because it's not really, we're not, we're not deciding what this structure is made out of, or, I mean, this, this plan has things on it having to do with specifications of windows and other things. I expect, because of the expense incurred to have this made, this is what the applicant will go with, instead of coming up with a whole new plan. But, the, the parts of the zoning bylaw which we're, or the zoning bylaw which we're charged to enforce, doesn't include what the windows are made out of, how, you know, what the...
Color is.
The color is, or anything else. We're not approving...
I don't think anybody is looking...
We're not, we're not approving, in my mind, we're not approving that the building has to be built exactly like this, but dimensionally, it has to be within the four corners of our decision. The square footage, the living space, the height, these are things that we are looking at, and we are restricting. But, but to say it has to look just like, look just like the plan before us, there's very, it's very reasonable for an applicant to have slight modifications in a building, in the structure, but they can't have modifications in the footprint, the height, or those restrictions that are there as part of the zoning bylaws. We're here to enforce the zoning bylaws.
We're not saying that, we're just saying that he's probably not Italian, so he doesn't need four kitchens, that's what we're saying.
Well, it seems to me, I, I think we can say that it's substantially in compliance with the plans provided, and let, um, let Bob decide, because this is what he's presented as it looks like, and, um, no, I, I don't want him, I don't want to create a situation where he has to come in because he's moving a wall around, but, he's presented the plan, I think we could say that it's substantially compliant with the, the plans provided, because that's part of the analysis, you know, what's it, what, uh, is it, is it not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And he's the one that presented the plans, I, I think that we can, we can condition it on, on that, and again, substantially in compliance, I think Bob knows, Bob, Bob has a sense of the, you know, it's the old story, I know, I know beauty when I see it, right? Pornography when I see it.
But if you redesigned the structure and brought it in with a two-story structure, would you, I wouldn't want him coming back here to talk to you.
Well, cannot exceed, you've done that before.
Just to clarify, whether or not it is more detrimental is only before us if there's an intensification of a nonconformity. If there is not, we don't even have the right to prohibit something if it's substantially more detrimental under Gail.
Good, now, referring to the plans he submitted, the addition, and it's just to bring the house up, is that correct?
It's a raisiner construction.
No, it's, it's completely different.
Yeah, the, the footprint of the home differs as well.
Okay, how much towards Marion Road does it come?
Currently, the, the open deck is...
Just over a foot and a half further.
Twenty-three point, twenty-seven point three feet, and the new proposed structure is going to be...
Where the deck is, right, Paul? So it's not any further to Marion Road than where the deck is? So it's twenty-seven point three feet?
And what he's building, okay, currently at the level of the street, is going to require a certain height, correct? He's not going to be able to build twenty feet higher, and then bring the foundation higher by adding stone and retaining walls.
Bob, perhaps you can explain how the, how the, how the height measurement is, is figured?
Well, it is the average grade as it meets the foundation around the perimeter of the home, I see on this plot plan that spot elevations are given every so many feet. Am I correct in that, Paul? Those are spot elevations?
Spot elevations are the existing grade?
Right, are those, are those likely to change?
Yeah, note number ten says the existing bit concrete drive and catch base in them to be raised to the proposed driveway, which will slow from elevation sixteen point six at the house, to the existing pavement.
Fifteen five, fifteen eight at Marion, right.
Which goes from fifteen and a half to fifteen point eight.
Okay, but the sixteen point six, for example, at the east...
It's the current.
Corner, the northeast corner, is not only current, but is likely to be very close to the finished grade there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, we're not going to come, as has happened next door, we're not going to come and see a four-foot retaining wall along the property line to bring the grade up, therefore to allow the building to be raised up based on that new grade, this existing grade is going to remain very close to what it is now, and that'll be the, the spring point, if you will, for the measurement of the roof height. Does that sound, sound right?
Yes.
Is there, um, someone else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name's Damien Groger, I live at seventy-two Kenneth Road, um, when the plan was proposed, you talk about raising the first floor, so when you add, when you raise the first floor and you add a, and you add the, the first floor living space, if the foundation can't handle the, the weight of the house, can he raise this, start again, knock it down, and therefore it's not necessarily the plan that you're looking at? Because we talked, we were told he's going to raise what he has, bring up what he has, and build underneath. And, and in my house, I had to redo all the interior structures because it was built as a cottage, therefore structurally, the foundation, structurally would support that much space on it. So my question is, is, what we heard is that he's going to take the house and lift it, and then build a pool underneath it, and I'm saying the foundation, I want to know that the foundation can handle that extra capacity.
Well, so would we, and so, obviously, well, the structural engineer will have to supply plans, so this does need structural engineering plans stamped and approved.
And if, if in fact, could he knock it down, start again with the new poured foundation, without coming back to this board?
Interesting, conceivably, yes, if the envelope that's shown here on the site plan remains as shown. In other words, we're not concerned with whether a wall is newly constructed or an existing to remain wall, what the board is looking at right now is that...
Four corners and...
The setbacks and the height of the building are within zoning requirements.
Also, when I did an addition on my house, um, single-story setback on a side lot was eight feet, and it was fourteen feet if I went two stories from a side lot.
That's not...
I think there's a misunderstanding.
Okay, that's what I was told.
Doesn't work that way in situ.
The only thing else I have is about when he did the grades...
Okay, I'm sorry, you just can't, I know you're sitting in the hot seat, but you don't get to talk at will, so you have to raise your hand, anybody else? Um, sir?
Hello, I'm Mary, eighty-seven Marion Road, section under questions or requests. If the board does approve, could you please make it conditional upon many of the items, if not all of them, that we've heard tonight?
I'm sorry, I didn't, conditional on what?
No grade change.
We can't do that, I don't think, I, I mean, I don't know, can we do that?
Uh, well, if you're going to, if you're going to condition your approval on this plan, I'm looking at grades on this plan, which I'm going to, I'm going to expect to find on the site.
Okay, that's kind of answering the question.
And the grade, grade changes that have been proposed on the plan, item number ten, they're listed.
Are listed here, right, so other than that, I would expect to see no grade change if this is the plan the board approves.
Generally, generally, our decisions are very broadly structured to say, based on the plan, we cite the plan, the date and the revision that was before us, and that's what we're approving. They can't come in and do something that's different than what's on the plan, and since elevations are here, and proposed grade elevation changes, which is basically the driveway, which was presented before us in the meeting, that's what we're approving, so they can't do anything else than that.
Seventy-nine forty, could I respectfully suggest that if you looked at what was approved for the ninety-four building, that there's no resemblance whatsoever to what's actually there?
But that would be the, that would be the responsibility of the building inspector to follow up on what's...
Actually, one more condition if I may, um, can we please define the term, increase the gross floor area of the dwelling by a hundred and two percent?
Yeah.
So, if the building was currently one thousand square feet, and we increased it by, that's habitable area, and if we increased it by a hundred and two percent, it would go to two thousand and twenty? Did I do that right? So, two thousand and twenty, it would go to two thousand and twenty?
In this case, the, the actual existing gross floor area is presented as one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight square feet, the new structure, when completed, will have two thousand seven hundred and fifty-six square feet, and I'm assuming that Mr. Barabito has, has done his math correctly, and it's a hundred and two percent increase.
So, will that be a condition of your written approval?
It's on the plan.
Yes, yes, it is a conditional.
Yes.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
So, okay, we've talked about the height, and the landfill, and the amount of space this is going to take, but is there any kind of conformance to the properties around it, in relation to the properties around it? What is this doing, this is, what, two times bigger than every, any other property on the street?
Well, I don't know, how big is ninety-two? Ninety-two, I understand, is a lot... 92, I understand, is a lot bigger than that.
Well, that's true. But there are other large homes in this neighborhood. There are several.
2,700 is not that-
One of those streets.
Right across the street, one down here.
27, 2,700 square feet is not that large a structure.
No, it's really not.
In the town of Situate, or? I understand, I know your neighborhood well.
Okay, okay. People?
Maybe this is part of it, but when we take in 92 and that property being together, that's a big chunk of the street.
Right, but we don't look at them together. We don't look at them together.
Another way to look at, another way to consider it is, look at what's happened on Rebecca Road and Lighthouse Road. When I was a kid, they were all little summer cottages. They've, they've changed. Our neighborhoods are changing. It's the nature of what's happening in the town of Situate. If other property owners have had that, the ability to do that, the bylaws allow it, we have to be consistent in our decisions. You can't change the size of your lot, but you can change the structure that's on it within the, within the boundaries of the limitations of the bylaws.
But he is increasing it.
Not his, not his, not the property side, not the property, the land. He can't change his land, because that's all he's got, unless he buys some more from someone else. But you can change the structure that's on it. You can develop it in a different way, as long as it's within the boundaries of our bylaws.
Ma'am, he's, he's making the home bigger. The code only allows us to prohibit that when he is making the home bigger and going beyond the allowable setbacks, or beyond the existing setbacks that preceded the zoning code. In this instance, he is not doing either of those things.
Regarding the grades, were those measurements taken when it was, before? Well, it's a big issue here.
I know, I, I can't tell you, Mr. Baravito.
Well, I'm asking you to find out. Before the land was filled in, and the driveway leveled off, was that before the measurements, or after?
The grades that are before us are the grades that the new structure will substantially present. If they've added, if they're now above 16.6 at the northeast corner of the building, they're going to have to take soil out, because they can't be higher than that. That's what this plan says the grade is. If the grade, he stipulates on the plan that the existing grade, that the, the catch basin rim will be raised to the proposed driveway, which will slope from elevation 16.6, which is the same as the corner of the, of what's proposed on the plan, to the Marion Road at 15.5 and 15.8.
And I'm, and I'm asking you to find out that was presented-
It's irrelevant when it was, when it was done. It's being presented as fact as to what the lot will look like when it's done.
So you're saying a person can fill all this property in, and raise the grade, then measure it, and come before you and say, this is the present grade, without any other-
No, this is the present grade. This is what-
Only because he's added fill to the area.
Well, sir, he hasn't added that much fill. There's a garage. He could still get into the garage and-
No, he can't.
But if he can't get into the garage, he still hasn't, the, the, the whole lot is essentially 16 feet, unless he's gone and buried his house somehow. It's 16, it's still essentially 16 feet. 16.6 at the northeast corner-
Do you have a picture?
It's 16.7 at the northwest corner.
But that's a driveway elevation that they-
That's elevator, driveway elevation is 14.9. If he's come from 14.9 up to 16.6, that's perfectly acceptable. It's not what we're, he's telling us on the plan he intends to do it.
The driveway's below grade in, in the pictures.
You're allowed to raise that driveway.
The roadway entrance, or the, down the bottom?
Mark, if you're still going back to the idea that we want to drain water into his driveway, not possible. It's not possible.
Well, the town's still investigating, so they thought it was possible.
I don't, they can investigate all they want. It's not possible. It's illegal. The town could, he could take the town to court to change it, because it's his land. It's not the town's land unless they have an easement.
Which they're still investigating. But I forget, I'm not-
Land, court, land.
I'm not addressing the catch base anymore. I'm addressing the fact that we have measurements about, about the current level. I'm just asking whether that was before the fill was added, or after the fill was added.
These are both proposed and current. So again, if it's, it doesn't matter whether it's, the driveway's been somewhat filled in now. He's got that addressed in the plan stating that it will be, to the new floor elevation coming into the garage at 17 feet, he's going to bring that fill up to the road. The other areas are listed on the plan, at the corner of the house, what that fill is now, those are the ones I'm going to ask him to remain, which is noted on the plans at Note 10.
How much change is that going to be?
There is none, no change. It's what's noted on the plan that was my request from him.
But the notation on the plan, how much is that going to change from the current existing right now?
It's not. The only place it's changing, we asked, one of the first couple of questions we asked, the place that it's going to change is the garage area, where he has noted on the plan that he is raising an elevation. The driveway and the garage.
The plan date is July 29th. If he added on July 30th, or if he adds tomorrow, it's only going to serve to hurt him, because he's going to have to take it out, because the baseline has been set.
So, the end result is he's going to have no garage?
The end result is he's, he's proposing to build 33 feet, five and three-quarters inches, above the 16.6-foot elevation that we see on the plan. And that is what we may approve.
Okay. Is that from the bottom floor of the garage, or the property itself?
From 16.6 feet above what I'm guessing is mean sea level, he's applying to build an additional 33 feet, five and three-quarters inches in height. No, please.
Not exactly. It's the average grade.
It's the average, you've got 16.6 to 18.5.
So that is the baseline.
He doesn't know what he's planning to do, because he hasn't seen the plans, have no idea. So what-
The plans are here for your review, and they will be part of the building record, which you will have access to.
Because, again, 92 plans weren't what, again, you're saying-
We've covered that once or twice.
He just wants that to happen again. I mean, he has currently purchased another house across the street.
Repeating yourself over and over about other properties is not what we're here to talk about. I'm sorry, we've heard it. I'm, I'm sorry, I personally don't really want to spend a lot more time talking about 92, Mark. It's just not on the table. And we've said that a variety of times, and you're not hearing us.
Well, I've heard you, okay?
And please stop talking about it.
They told us that 92 wouldn't happen, but it did. So now, it's the same person, and we're at 94. Our neighbors will make sure that 92 don't happen at 94. We're looking for your, okay, encouragement and resolve that-
If you haven't been hearing us, because we've been very clear-
So you're telling me 92 won't happen at 94? That's all we're telling you.
We're telling you very clearly.
We're here to look at 94 tonight.
Really?
We're here to look at 94 tonight, and we can put the restrictions on 94 that are shown in the plans. We can address another address.
Okay.
So that's where we have to concentrate.
Okay, so those restrictions, as presented tonight, will be etched in stone for the-
They'll be etched in stone in our decision. Sir, I'm sure you understand that this board has no power to then go forth and enforce them.
I got that.
We are a volunteer board of private citizens who live in Situate. We do have a building department, which does an above-average job at enforcing those restrictions.
I have no problem with that. But the problem is that, open the gate, okay? We got to catch up.
Sir, and also, I'm sure you understand that we can't prohibit someone from building something that's within the code, because they may or may not have violated that code in the past.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Yes?
Pardon my ignorance, this is a moot question, but is there a variance in the code for usage?
No, there's, there, no, there's, there's no-
We're not granting a variance.
Yeah, this is not a variance situation.
But I mean, who would that be taking up with, if there was?
I don't quite understand where you're going.
Let's say it was being, let's say the building was being expanded for commercial purposes or rental purposes, as opposed to, you know, life enhancement.
Private property can be, he can rent it.
Who would that be directing to?
It's all within what your rights are as a property owner. You can rent your home, if you wish. He can't use it for uses that are not allowed in the zone, without a, without a special permit, if there's a special permit available for an other use. And there are certain uses which you absolutely cannot use it for. But renting your home to someone who's not the property owner is perfectly legal under Massachusetts law and our bylaws. He could operate a small business out, in it, without stock and trade, with no more than one other employee. He could have a professional office in it. He could have a small art studio. I mean, there, the bylaws full of things that you can do on your property. And frankly, I believe the town of Situate, because they voted for these bylaws, wants that flexibility and use of their property. He cannot operate a factory, or a microbrewery, or a, you know, or a, he cannot, he could, he could operate a boarding house within our bylaws. He could have five, up to five unrelated boarders, sharing the kitchen facilities and everything else. But, you know, he can only do what the bylaws allow, and there's a lot of things you're allowed to do with. But getting a variance is, is almost impossible to, it's a very high threshold to earn a variance.
And again, you're all volunteers.
Yeah.
You're better running women than I am.
Thank you.
I'm not sure about that, but, thank you.
Okay. I think, unless anybody has anything new to add, I think we should go back to the board. After listening to all of this, do you have anything else to add, Bob?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Anybody on the board have any other questions, comments, or anything related there, too?
Yeah, my only comment would be, just so you know, I agree with Ed that I don't think that architectural drawings, while I think they're helpful to us in looking at what may be intended in the property, I don't think we can, can and should be binding people to, to that. I think that's beyond the purview of what the-
Well, again-
I think in the square footage area is where we're going to concentrate on.
Agree.
Yeah, where that, that might jiggle around a little bit, but as I say, that's where our decision.
I think there are some caveats to that. For instance, the multifamily use-
Agreed.
-special permit that we were granting, where the border, where the code allows for it. But in a situation like this, I don't think the code gives us purview over that.
Yeah. Well, I, I personally think we could say that it's substantially in compliance, overall design-wise, perhaps. Maybe there's a way to phrase it that doesn't bind him unnecessarily. But I think this was, you know, again, there's a great deal of concern in the neighborhood, and I think rightfully so, from everything I've heard.
Let me ask the applicant, if the applicant's willing to testify. If we were to include in our decision that your, the building you construct is substantially identical to the plan presented-
Now, identical is not a word to use.
Substantially-
Consistent with.
Consistent with the plan presented before us tonight, and we cited this plan, would that be, would that be difficult?
You're going down a dangerous road there, because-
Yeah, no legal advice to the applicant.
Legal advice to my fellow board members.
No, I don't think we are. We've done it before.
We're going down a dangerous road there, because then if a successor owner seeks to modify the exterior of the home in a way that typically wouldn't require zoning relief or review, we've created a-
I don't think so.
...language in a zoning decision that is very arguably unenforceable, and it puts our building department-
No, I think it's constructed.
And our board in a tough spot.
By example, the decision that was before us a few weeks ago, where the, a previous zoning board had identified the business owners, the businesses operating on a parcel, instead of just simply saying the uses that were being done on the parcel, it became-
At least there, we were clear what they were getting at.
Right.
In this instance-
Adam's suggesting that was a bad move on their part, and I agree with you on this. I was simply trying to get from the applicant that if this is substantially, you know, the kind of thing he's looking to structure, to build, we have that testimony here, before the, on recorded testimony. And frankly, that relieves me of a concern to have to say it has to be built just like this.
Oh my God, it has nothing to do with it. You can say anything, but it's, no, it has everything to do with the decision.
I don't think we have a right to, to make a decision, to structure our decision on this, on an architectural design. And, but the applicant has said it's his intention to build substantially this structure, then I think we're in good shape to, but to find if it so comes to pass within the dimensional requirements on this site plan. And we can cite that in our decision, we reviewed the plan that was before us. But I don't think we can say it has to be built, we have to have an as-built in compliance with this plan.
Well, I don't think we're saying that. And, and I would certainly not support that. We've never said that, I would not support it. But I, I think that there, that we can say that the, all the things that you said, but that the plan, the design of the property is, is-
Similar in nature to the plan submitted.
Substantially in compliance with this.
Sarah, if he removed the decks and changed all the roof lines, but they were still within the height and width block-
Agreed.
-that that plan has, it'd be hard to argue that that's not substantially different.
You're right.
And the floors.
And I don't, I feel that it would be within his right to change the roof lines and remove the deck.
No, he doesn't need to come back.
I don't think that we have that right as a board.
You know what? I'm trying to, I'm trying to balance what he's willing to do with what the neighbors are rightfully concerned about.
I understand. I just don't think we have that right as a board.
Yes, sir.
Two more quick-
Oh, no. No, no, we already closed it. No, no, we closed, we closed it, we closed it to the public. Sorry. No, no, seriously, we did, close it to the public.
There's small questions to answer.
No, 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 no.
Is there?
No, I'm sorry, no.
Well, you have to listen to me.
No, no, I don't.
I'm asking for the town bylaw, what's the limit on the-
No, please, no.
No, no, just tell me.
I've had nobody ever have to bang this again.
How big can they go? How big can they go above what the current, you have 105 to whatever? What is the limit? That's all I'm asking for. There is no limit.
You know?
Okay, number two.
No.
Number two.
No.
Quick one, this affects the town.
I'm going to, I'm going to walk out of this meeting. You're not listening to the chairman of this board.
You know?
And that's not appropriate.
Well, she hasn't closed the meeting, as far as I know.
No, we've closed the public discussion.
We closed the public discussion. Now we're discussing our decision.
I didn't hear that determination.
Yeah.
Okay, I had my hand raised.
We did, but thank you. Your, your passion?
It's not my passion, it's just my-
The passion of the neighbors, which must obviously be a passion for the neighborhood that you live in. And we're, we're hearing you. And the, and the board is hearing you loud and clear, and the building department hears you loud and clear. So, to continue our discussion.
Amongst the board members.
Amongst the board members. I would be in favor of, of wording it that, since he has agreed, that it's substantially in compliance, and that modification, and we could put in there modifications, insubstantial modification, I don't know how to word it exactly, but can be approved by the building department.
I would, I wouldn't support that in the decision, so it's, I don't need to go there. I don't believe that the architectural drawings, they are helpful in our decision-making, but they're not something we can--
Well, you certainly need three yeses for this. I'm going to say that.
You're absolutely right. I feel strongly that what you're proposing is an extension of the zoning code and is a step towards overall design review--
And--
--of beautification code--
Anthony--
--which is not only not in the spirit of our zoning code, but I believe it would be violation of Massachusetts common law.
Okay. Let me, and I've referred you to this in the bylaw before, and I'm going to tell you that under 950.4, it says, "Conditions of approval: Exercising the powers granted by 950.2 above the Board of Appeals may impose such conditions, safeguards, and limitations, both of time and use, as it may reasonably deem reasonably appropriate to protect the neighborhood or otherwise serve the purpose of the bylaw, such as, but not limited to, modification of the exterior features or appearance of the structure." So, and regulate, I'm sorry, and, oh, well, that's, never mind. E is not appropriate here. But I think that gives us, you know, and I know boards, long before I was on, have discussed this. We don't often do it. I think this is a time to do it. And I think it's, it's, again, we have an applicant who's willing to do it. We have real concerns about neighbors, about what has happened in the past. I think that it's been presented to us that this is designed. I certainly do not want to tie his hands if he wants to, you know, switch, switch a window here or there, whatever, but--
So where's the line?
So the line is just substantial, it's substantially, perhaps even the word substantially similar to, you know, so he doesn't sort of come up now with a flat face structure because guess what? I'd get a little bit more room that way, you know?
They're already controlling that because we've got the square footage.
Well, that's true.
You know, the architectural design of the structure--
Is, and what one person feels is pretty and appropriate in appearance, and what another person feels, is a dangerous line to draw within our code.
Let me tell you something, Anthony.
Dimensions are what's before.
I do not think this is pretty.
I--
If I was deciding whether I thought it was an attractive house, I perhaps would say something different.
By adding that language, we're leaning towards a review of the general appearance of structures, which is not, was never the intention of the code, in my opinion.
Well, I think you're wrong.
I'm going to have to agree. I think we could get more done. Stick it to the, stay away from this. Let's design review.
Well, you got a problem because I don't, you got a problem--
It needs three votes to pass, so my suggestion would be respectful--
Come on.
Sarah, you make a motion as to what it is that you think it should be, if that's what, if you think you want to make that as a condition and see if the other two voting members go with it.
Well, come on. I'll make a motion.
Only need two votes. Look at it, bylaw.
For a special permit, I--
Where, where in the by, I would love to find that in the bylaw, but--
You look under section 810.3.
Yeah.
It requires a finding, not require a special permit.
Special permit, sorry.
Finding is two votes of three board members of this board.
Makes a finding. So where does it say the finding takes two votes?
It's, I'm happy to brief it for you.
I think we'll take that. If you're going to stick with that, then do that.
I'm happy to do it for you.
Then would you like to continue this until next week, next month?
I'm not, I'm not an applicant.
Oh, then what are you sticking, oh, Sarah, Jeff? There'll be a lot of kicking up, Jeff.
Just because that's rather pertinent to how we conduct our business, I'm reviewing 810.3, and again, keep in mind, I'm looking for it only needing two votes.
Okay.
I don't see that noted.
But isn't, isn't, aren't they also asking for--
Oh, it says other.
--a special permit under 810.2A?
I don't know what they're asking for, I'm just--
Yeah. Because it's, because it's an increase of over, over--
That's right.
--20 percent. So I think it's still a special permit.
Yeah, that's how we--
It is 810.2.
That's how we've always conducted--
It's 810.2.
--our business.
It's a good, good thought.
All right, so I will--
I'd, motion that the board regarding the application for 94 Marion Road, motion that the board find that the proposed improvements per the plan submitted by Ross Engineering and dated July 29, 2016, that the board find that the proposed improvements do not create any new nonconformities at the site, and do not propose an extension of any existing nonconformities.
In addition to that, can we list some of the 10 items on the plan that refer to setbacks, elevations?
Further, that the board find, in finding such regarding the proposed improvements, the board condition its finding on the proposed improvements at the site being built in a matter, in a manner that was not to exceed the proposed side, front, and rear and setbacks and height, as noted on the plan, and in regards to keeping in mind the existing elevations at the ground level shown on said plan.
Okay, I, I just have to say, there's no height elevation on the plan, is there?
Not on the site plan.
It's a, with the, the application does contain--
It's the written application.
You said, you said, as noted on the plan, it's not on the plan.
And as noted in the written application.
That's on the plan.
Where is it on the plan? No, that's the, that's the square--
You said square footage, I was answering the question.
Oh. Okay. Square footage is here.
So your, your motion is a Gale A motion, which is that because there's no increase in a nonconformity and there's no intensification of the nonconformity--
Well, and then to be consistent, to the extent there is any intensification, given that this, we've discussed before, that this is a nonconforming as to lot area--
Right.
--to the extent there is any intensification, that said intensification would not be substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Second.
I don't do that often, but we certainly can discuss that. So I'm wondering if I have a copy of, this is really, this, this is, the height requirement, I mean, the height is, which one of these cases talked about the height being intensification? I'm trying to--
Well, this height can't be an intensification because it's allowed, it's allowed as a right.
Right.
The height is, the height is not nonconforming, neither existing nor proposed.
Right, we've always looked at height as being something that the building department basically monitors--
Yeah.
And my new understanding, both existing and proposed height are within the code.
Yes.
There's no relief sought as to height.
Right.
And at the current level? Well, just didn't say that.
And then the other thing we could do is, I suppose this information could be reconfirmed within "as-built." As part of the--
Sure.
You're going to require one anyway.
Yeah. My understanding is, well, within "as-built" after the fact, I'm--
Yeah, well, it has built at the foundation, then, so they'll list the grade and the heights, so that we'd have that information match up with this.
Right.
All right, so, under the second, all right, so this is what we have to do under Gale.
Therefore, you wouldn't be--
All right, Gale, under Gale, we have to first identify the particular aspect or respects in which the existing structure does not conform. Okay, so, let's go through those.
Identify it on the plan.
Okay.
It's a lot area, lot frontage, and the--
Right-side setback.
Right-side sideline.
Okay.
And that's it.
And then we have to determine whether the proposed alteration or addition would intensify the existing nonconformities or result in additional new ones. And I think they certainly, if you are-- Well, let me think.
The motion was for no new nonconformities, and to the extent that it represents an intensification of lot area, we find that it is not substantially more detrimental.
Well, like, see, I can say, because I, I think it, because you only, you only, if you, if you do not intensify any existing noncon, it is only if you find that they do not intensify the existing nonconformities, that the applicant is entitled to the issuance of a special permits. But if, if they intensify nonconformities, you have to find a finding of no substantial detriment.
And that is my motion.
And what we've been doing is, is a caution, because there's a split in the courts about whether--
Lot area can be intensified.
Lot area, increasing size on a lot area--
Isn't it?
--in a, in a town which doesn't have a McMansion by law, it's a split in the courts as to whether there, if that is an intensification, we've just been saying, we'll say, well, if there, if it's considered to be an intensification, we deem it's not a substantial detriment. And so we're basically addressing the substantial detriment standard here.
Right, right.
It's belt and suspenders. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to, I think it's important, what we're discussing here and referring to Gale, this is a court case which somewhat bound the hands of zoning enforcement, zoning appeals boards throughout the state, because it was found that we can only do so many things. If we find this way, then it has to go this way. And we're discussing that based on the court case and the restrictions that are upon us.
And just to cover another point, although I've been accused of liking hearing myself talk, I promise it's not at 9:04 on a Thursday. We all want to be home at least as much as you do. This discussion goes to our power to limit private citizens' use of land in situ. It's something that I take very seriously, I think all the board members do, and that's why we're taking the time to fully discuss it.
Thank you, we too, it's important to us as well. I would, I would move to modify that, to condition it further that the applicant-- the house in substantial compliance regarding the exterior design in accord with the drawings provided by M Designs of 17 Nelson Road in Situate, Mass., and presented with his application.
With respect, I'd request that for the record, we vote on my motion unamended first, and then we submit a second motion in the event that my motion does not fail.
Does fail. Doesn't pass.
If it does not pass, excuse me.
In order to amend the motion, a second--
A second motion?
Yes.
I think it's important. In order to amend a motion, you need a second. If a five-member board with three voting members, if a member cannot get a second on a motion, the member needs to consider whether the motion is appropriate in the spirit of the board.
I mean, do we use--
Is there a second for the motion?
Do we use the word similar?
Let me, let me just say this, because I think I understand what Sarah wants to do here. And, and I think it's, I think it's well-intentioned, and I respectfully disagree with it for the reason I said earlier. But being practical here, if the motion's not seconded, and Sarah votes no, then the, so everybody understands, the application for a special permit fails, and I--
I'm not sure that's the case. I think we can make a second. There could be another motion. I don't think that one failed motion--
Well, if you make, if your motion goes, your motion is, without the amendment from Sarah, is going to fail.
If it fails, I don't think there's anything stopping myself or another member of the board from presenting a motion that differs.
I don't know, I've never seen that before.
I haven't seen it either, but I have, I do realize that it's important that the board members not consider that the input from both the audience, the applicant, and fellow board members. And if out of five board members, only one board member has a, has a differing opinion, it would seem that it would be appropriate to seriously consider whether that opinion is worth defeating an application where the applicant then can then go to the court and appeal our decision and have it sent back to our lab.
You know, Ed, I think you need to reconsider whether your position is correct.
Well, and I think everyone's considered that, and to the extent everyone feels so strongly about their positions, they should be noted on the record in, if it's the case, that the first motion, as it's been presented, fails, and a second motion, it succeeds or doesn't. I think that, given the gravity of this question, it's important that that is noted on the record here and in the minutes.
I think also just, getting back to Frank's practical point, we do have both the applicant and the audience at this point agreeing to these sets of plans. So I think--
I mean, find another way to say it.
Right, that's right, that's what I'm--
I'm open to, I'm open to alter.
I agree with you, John.
Do we, do we kind of, you know, do we use the word similar to the set of plans submitted to give us a little bit of room for adjustments in it without getting too defined as there?
In that instance, we're kicking the can on this issue, aren't we? We might as well put it on the record. We've been dancing around this for a while.
I'm not sure what you're saying there, but--
The other thing is, with the amendment, I don't think the motion will pass because I won't vote for a motion that includes a architectural, what I consider an architectural view, and, and an extension of the board's powers. I don't see as appropriate.
Well--
Yeah, again, do we put it in as a reference and as a suggestion? You know, that way he doesn't have to--
Well, do you have, do you have another, another way to word it that you can live with?
Ed, do you have any way, or you oppose?
I think we're talking about setbacks, lot size, height restrictions. We have already referenced grade, that there won't be any changes in that. The applicant, this is a reconstruction of existing property. Could go in there, find out that the existing property cannot be reconstructed as this plan is stipulates, come up with a very simple two-story colonial to put on the lot, and I would think that would be perfectly okay with the neighbors and if the applicant chose to go there.
Yep.
And I don't need them to come back and have another hour and a half meeting deciding whether he's in compliance with the special permit and findings. Architectural review is not our purview.
Or our decision to give a neighbor an opening to start complaining to our zoning, to our building enforcement department because a window was moved, and whether or not that was substantial or significant or--
And how do you define that? And then you get into a large debate, and the--
The type of signing--
Appeal of the building inspector's decision, et cetera.
I think it's a little bit of a gray area because we are making a determination here, albeit conditionally, that it's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the existing structure. In one way, we could condition that, I suppose, would be to be, to go beyond what we normally do and to approve some sort of architectural construct. I don't like going down that road, I said that earlier, but I think in this case, where the applicant has graciously agreed to build in accordance with this plan, and the neighbors want something there to protect what it is they think is coming into their neighborhood, that I think that I am willing to make an exception in this case. Now, I'm not a voting member, so--
The only concerns we've heard from the neighbors tonight have been in regards to height and width and setbacks in size.
They haven't--
We didn't hear any, any concerns about what the exterior is supposed to look like. And I feel that even if we had, they wouldn't be concerns that fall before the purview of this board, but--
To their point.
Yeah.
And they haven't seen this plan. I believe, I don't think anyone--
Somebody said he hasn't seen--
I don't think anyone's seen it.
The motion I've been, I've presented, which has been seconded, found that the only thing that goes to my motion's determination of whether or not it's more detrimental are the matters which were contained in the motion, height, setbacks, square footage, and the like.
Understand, just trying to find a middle ground.
Yes.
I know.
I mean--
The cleaner we can make our decisions, the less likely we're going to be overturned and have it thrown back.
And that's, that's a reasonable--
Let me suggest--
Absolutely.
My understanding that someone coming before this board to do what they want to do, what this applicant wants to do on his property, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no requirement that the applicant submit a set of architectural drawings for obvious reasons, okay? The applicant in this case has gone to great extent of time and money to present the plan that he would like to construct on that property. Having said that, those are the plans that were submitted. He did engage a structural engineer to make sure that the house could take away to the second floor, and that'll be presented to the building department. But the applicant, as well as anyone else, would have the right to change those plans if he wanted to. If they were going to do that, they would not go to the expense of draw those plans. He's expressed to me that that's the house he wants to build, that's a, that's a substantial set of plans, that's a full set of architectural plans, which we usually don't bring in here because it isn't a requirement. It isn't a, it's not going to be a detriment to the neighborhood. The plan is less than height than was supported by your bylaw. The point I'm trying to make is that where there's no requirement that any applicant coming here that wants to do this has to submit a full set of architectural drawings, and I don't see any reason why this application couldn't be tied to that set of drawings. If he wants to change something, it's within his rights, so be it, but some are going to that extent, both the architectural, the structural, and the engineering. My experience has been that they don't change those things.
Well, how about, how about this?
I'd like to post a point. If we start to make our findings based on whether we don't like architectural plans, and we tie applicants' hands, they're less likely to bring them forward to us. It's always helpful--
I don't like these plans, so don't tell me I'm basing on my height.
Excuse me, excuse me. It's helpful in our, making our decisions that we have plans. I would like to encourage applicants-- I would like to encourage applicants to bring them forward to us. Generally, what we see is what we get, generally. But I don't think it's within our purview to legislate that they must build what they have presented. I would rather have them feel confident that they can come to us with ideas that we can discuss. We have in the public record that the applicant's intention is to build this, but I don't think we can legislate it. I don't think we can put it in our finding that he has to build it, other than there's intentional restrictions.
Well, again, you might try reading the bylaws. Okay, I'm not going to...
I've read the bylaws, and I've been on this board longer than you have.
Well, you haven't read them. Oh, you know what? You know...
Please don't get into a contest.
Don't give me that either. You know, this has... It is within...
Any objection?
Okay. I... please, people. It's... I think it's absolutely within our bylaw. I've stated it. I am... have expressed that I have no desire... So my suggestion would be, we rip off the top page, and we don't refer to the whole set of plans. We just find a way to say substant... either substantially similar to the... the project... the rendering presented. There's a fine... you know, and if it's... if all of the above, then there is no harm in putting this in, in some form, to handle all... to come to a reasonable...
There is. He may want to just put a two-story colonial on there.
I think at this point, if...
He says he doesn't.
Sarah, if you wouldn't mind making your motion for the modification again, we could see if it gets a second, and then we could start processing votes.
Okay, first of all, let's start with, was there a second to the first modification?
There... I don't believe there was.
Okay, so we pull that back. All right. All right, so I would like to propose a further modification to Anthony's motion that the project... now, just, I don't know how to... I'd have to look at your thing to where to insert into your motion, in accord with the site plan as presented, and...
A general description of the house to be built? That's all it is. But it's crazy.
This is very muddy water.
Yeah, I know.
Well, so I'm trying to phrase it properly.
That's why we...
You can't make it clear. You can't understand easily and clearly. It's not really something we should be putting into a finding.
Yeah, because we don't really care about the color of the shade.
It's not part of our decision.
Or the roof pitch. We have to go by the square footage.
All due respect, I'm trying to make it part of our decision.
Yeah.
All due respect, I'd like to get on with the rest of our...
Well, Mr. Appicant, I'm sorry, because I probably murder your name. You see where we're sitting. We got some issues here, and we can do a couple of things. We can... I will tell you that the discussion from any audience would be closed, but we could continue the hearing and give us a lot... give us some opportunity to... for the board members to consider sort of this issue of reference to your plan and come back next month and hopefully come up with a phrased decision that we can live with. But it would not reopen the discussion. It would... no new evidence would be taken. But we have some pretty... you know, I'm standing in the middle, and literally in the middle. I'm not willing to do... I want to add more about this, and I'm having a hard time phrasing it properly, but if I think... I think if I had some time, I could come up hopefully with a decision on how to phrase it to make everybody happy. But it's up to you.
I would like to insist on this decision tonight.
Okay.
And that delays construction during the winter time, and that aggravates the situation and would cost more construction.
Okay, so you want us to make a decision?
I think you should and should.
Sarah, could everyone move their microphone?
Sure.
The other thing we have, two or three...
I don't think we should talk about it while Paul talks to his client, if they're going to leave the room.
It's a tough one to decide right now.
The office is open. There's a Bobrovsky on my desk.
It's probably the third quarter.
Hey, what's happening with the...
Seven three at the end of the first quarter.
Thank you.
How about the shots?
Whatever your application is, it's good. Go ahead.
We have a general question. Are we allowed to ask a general question?
Are we in recess right now? Are we off the record?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a general question.
We're being recorded.
Up, here we go.
Seven to six.
We'd like to request a continuous from us.
Okay. With the understanding that the... again, the discussion is over, except among the board members, and the decision... we're waiting for a motion.
Also, do we restrict the only decision left to make, then, is on the architectural in or out?
No, no, because no motion is...
Are we going to open that up?
I'll move to table the motion as presented and seconded.
Yes.
And to continue the hearing until October, at which time... October 20th, at which time the board will continue its deliberations. However, input from the audience has been closed. Public input has been closed.
Okay.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience.
I don't know why you clap. We didn't do anything.
We didn't do anything.
You're genuinely thinking through everything.
No, thank you. We tried.
After the sentiments of the...
I never expected that one to take that long.
Yeah.
All right.
Good to see you. How you been?
Still doing all your jogging, too?
Yeah, trying. Not as much as I want, but...
Are we going to break down 37 houses?
Oh, did you? Okay, because we were at my exit, and I hadn't seen you.
All right. Right there.
All right. Good night, Sarah.
I want to say what's...
Well, there's more motions to come. We'll see you next month.
The third Thursday, October 20th.
The third Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah.
All right. All right. If everybody could leave the room, except for those that are here... well, no, I'm sorry. If you have a discussion, take it outside, because we want to move on to 169 Jericho Road. Okay. No, I'm sorry, we have to move on. If you want to wait till this one's over, I'm happy to... yeah, yeah, no, just ask... just call town hall in the morning. I'm sorry. We just have to move it along. All right, Paul, you're still here, right?
Yes.
Is your client here?
Yes.
Just... just over there.
Okay. Annie?
Oh, she is left.
She's just getting Jeff.
Huh?
She's just getting Jeff.
Lisa. Step up.
Thank you. Sorry.
It's all right.
Up.
Yes.
Did you find it?
Everybody ready to move on? Okay. Mr. Maravito and Mr. DeLisi.
Was the notice read?
No.
No.
It was not. I'm sorry, Annie. She's going to...
David Camo of 6619 South Dixie Highway, Unit 376, Miami, Florida, requests a special permit and finding in accordance with the Situate zoning bylaw, Sections 470.6F, 810.2 3, 950.2A, 950.2B, and/or master and garage chapter 48, Section 6, and/or any other relief that the Board of Appeals may grant, that the raising of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling and accessory structure on a pre-existing nonconforming block on 169 Jericho Road in Situate accessory map, 46 block 14, household 10, and reconstruction of a single-family dwelling thereon will be less nonconforming and will not be substantially more detrimental or injuries to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure or use.
All right, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Attorney Jeff DeLisi, I'm here with Paul Maravito of Ross Engineering, my clients, Cecilia and David Camo regarding this matter. The board might recall that we were here a few months back. The matter was withdrawn without prejudice. We redesigned the property. I'll let Paul talk as to what we've done, but I just want to just give a short summary here is we've eliminated a side yard nonconformity altogether on the southwesterly side. We've... the existing house on the property is partially located in the public way. Our proposal is to remove it such that it is entirely located within the property line. We meet our rear yard setback. And essentially, what we have here is we have two existing structures on the property, both of which are in fairly dilapidated state. My clients, and just bear with me for a second, is the application lists Mr. Camo. I didn't prepare the application, as the Camos is residing in Florida. In fact, David Camo is a lifelong resident of Situate. His wife calls it Situate home. The intention here is to raise and reconstruct two existing structures on the property and to build a single-family dwelling, which they would have as their primary residence where they intend to retire. The buildings are, without any question, pre-existing nonconforming. And so, kind of jumping in and understanding where your issues are, you know, might be, your application does not require that renderings are required. And so therefore, we have not prepared renderings. We don't have renderings. And however, the Camos own the house... Paul, will you just turn that quickly? The Camos own the house right next door here. And Paul, would you point out the Camo's house?
This is their existing home there.
Right.
This is the house. That's the subject of this application.
Okay, and so, the Camos own the house right next door to the Paul just identified, and I think you'll see that...
Is that 167?
That's correct. Yeah. It was a raise and reconstruct, and I think you'll see that it's an attribute to the neighborhood. And any house that they design for this property is going to be in the spirit of that.
When you say in the spirit of that, in spirit of the same design?
It's a... I can't commit to a design. So what their intention is, is to build something that, along the lines of that, looks nice and beachy and is new and... and I don't... there is no proposed design at the moment. I'm just giving you that by way of example as to what they've built here before. And so, I think that a letter was submitted to the board in favor by Nubutter, Lindsay, and Selena Fink, which the board has, and...
I think I got one by email. I didn't print it out.
Yeah, it came in by email. Yep. So Paul, if you want to kind of piggyback off that and explain the plan...
The perimeter of the lot, the property lines are outlined in yellow. To the west of the dwelling, which is in this cross area, there's an existing accessory building here, which is 6.4 feet off the property line, which is nonconforming. The front of the existing house approaches the street line by four tenths, roughly five inches. The proposal is to beat this both side yard setbacks at eight and a quarter feet, eight being the minimum. The rear yard setback would be 20 and a quarter feet, and the front of the building would be moved back under the property approximately half a foot. So it's entirely within the law in proposed condition. In the blue is the outline of the proposed structure. We have a zoning chart on the plan that states the measurements I just talked about. We also have a... you know, the average setback along the street would be 3.1 feet, and we're showing it back after, you know, half a foot back down to the property. This is in a new FEMA flood zone, so the first floor would have to be at or above the proposed flood zone. That's based upon the March 1st, 2016 map, which is an elevation 15. The reason I mention that is part of the application's special permit to build a structure more than 25 percent in the town of Situate flood plain and water protection district, which is the one. In order to do that, the threshold is that we have to meet the FEMA flood requirements for the construction purposes, which we obviously would. The elevations on land are not going to change. It's a pretty flat lot. To the rear of the property and to the east of it is the town of Situate property, which is a parking lot for the people that park and go to the beach, which is to the east of the property. Again, this is the existing dwelling that the applicant owns, number 167. To the west of that, it's a former apartment building.
Yeah.
So that's what turned into a four-unit condominium structure. So I think with that, I'll end and answer any questions you may have.
Well, I guess the first thing, I kind of... I mean, I have the plans that were submitted the last time, and the plans were dated December 11th, 2015. And there was a lot of... I thought there was something underway, because this whole area with the town, there was going to be a land swap. What's the status of that?
Back in... at the annual town meeting in 1946...
Right.
And you have the plans in your application. I submitted everything from the title registration, registry...
Yeah.
...happened, right? This lot used to be... this lot used to be something like this.
Right.
Coming down here to a point. What happened was this piece here, which was part of this lot, the town meeting voted to swap this with this owner. The person that owns this lot here, who used to own this triangle out here...
Yeah.
He did was to let the town have it to return, and the town swapped this triangle, so he could basically square off his lot. The plan that was approved at the town meeting, you have that, as well as the town meeting vote. The two land swaps were recorded through the registry meeting. You have a copy of that as well. At the present time, some of the parking lots in the town is on this property.
Right.
It's a gurgle from the crosshair.
What's the status of that situation?
There's no... there's been nothing new.
--that happened. This lot used to be, this lot used to be something like this--
Right.
--coming down here to a point. What happened was--
The swap was in the corner.
--this piece here, which was part of this lot, the town meeting voted to swap this with this owner. The person that owns this lot here, he used to own this triangle out here.
Yeah.
He did was to let the town have it to return and the town swap this triangle so he could basically square off his lot. The plan that was approved at the town meeting, you have that as well as the town meeting vote. The two land swaps were recorded through the registry meeting. You have a copy of that as well. At the present time, some of the parking lots for the town is on this property.
Right.
It's a garage open across here.
What's the status of that situation?
There's no, there's been nothing new. We've had discussions in relation to the last application to voluntarily help the town to remove its encroachment and to restripe the lot. We haven't had any additional discussions with the town since the last hearing. And we'll continue to talk to them moving forward on that issue. Just to add, because I do think that I hope that we're not going to go down the road and have to debate this. But because this is a raise and reconstruct pursuant to your bylaw provision in all other instances under the bylaw, I think it's Section 810.2, I might have misspoke. My belief is that a finding and not a special permit is necessary. And I happen to look at the Bob Rowsky book during that short period of time I was out of the room. There is a case on it, and I just want it for the record. It's the Shrewsbury Edgemore case, which is 409 Mass. 317. And Bob Rowsky, just to, not to belabor the point, summarizes it and says that the case suggests that where the review of nonconformities is placed in the jurisdiction of the Board of Appeals without reference to a special permit, the finding may be accomplished by simple majority vote. And so I think that that's pretty direct. And I know that this is very much a nuanced issue. But if the board is in a position where there's a stalemate here, I think that a simple majority will take the cake. So having said all that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I believe that we've eliminated a nonconformity and made another one less nonconforming from the standpoint of setback. And so I think that the board can make this finding as requested.
Just one question, Paul, you might be-- so you're, on the proposal, you have a first floor of 1320, second floor of 1320, and a third floor of 900 square feet?
Yes.
All right, so that's what--
If that's what's on the plan, that's what we're--
Where that ends up is not, you know, it's going to end up within the footprint that you've designated. Might be left, right, or however you're going to do it, wherever the driveway is. But those are the sizes that--
That's what, that's what we're prepared to commit to, yes.
And elevation is 15? So roughly the first floor will be the same height if we look at the buildings next door as well for that reason?
It would be that high at a minimum. Our conservation commission requires that the top of your foundation be one foot above the base floor elevation.
Right.
So the top of the concrete foundation would have to be at 16. When you see AE elevation 15, that means the first floor has to be at 15.
Right.
With the conservation commission, because this is in the Land Service of Coastal Storm Flows, they require the top of the foundation to be at 16. So the first floor is going to be about 1742--
69.
--at a minimum. It could be higher. It could be.
Well, the existing first floor elevation is 10.5. So we're talking about a 5 and 1/2 foot increase. But that's, 5 and 1/2 feet isn't usable for anything. And if you look at the abutting property and the fourth building unit, and I was here when we granted those, we wanted the driveway or the parking under. It was part of the application at the time. And we approved it, seemed to be a wise decision because, so you're probably going higher than the elevation in order to make it a usable sub-first floor--
That would be your intent to either pull underneath the building or a side of it against, not a street parking issue, so you left some spaces on the property.
You would go underneath the building. It'd be the same situation as the second house over with the former apartment building, where all the parking is at street level. Under the new FEMA requirements, what you want to make sure you do is that if you're going to have, you don't want to have what they call a lower level. A lower level is when you have a floor that is below the base floor elevation in a house. Where you could have the garage floor down lower, which would be if the garage floor was at, say, elevation 10-- or I'm sorry, it's at the same elevation on the street. It's going to be less than 15, but that's okay for the garage. But if you're going to have a first floor of a house with a crawl space, you want to make sure the crawl space would be at or above the ground around it for FEMA.
This kind of goes to the question I'm going to raise, if I can piggyback on you. One of the, some of the decisions we have made along Rebecca, not Rebecca, Lighthouse, and I think on Rebecca as well, but it was mostly on Lighthouse, was where the houses are so close to the street, one of the issues that we do consider is safety. And the idea of an automobile parked in the garage 1 1/2 foot off the roadway, even though I know there's a sidewalk there and everything, and backing out into that roadway, it's a safety issue. You can't see. So I'd like some assurance that the design of the structure will take into consideration sightlines while leaving the grade level parking, which is under the building. Because I, again, I, you're not showing anything here that's reasonable off-street parking. I guess you could come in the 8.25 and go around the back. You know, you could make the whole back parking and probably get in underneath.
But Paul, are we thinking that this building potentially could have a garage inside it?
Yes. One of the thoughts was to put, was to put the garage in this area here. And one of the thoughts that we came up with was, we're an architect, but was to, yeah, the second floor--
Can't leave.
--in this shape here, can't leave. But what you do is you cut this back here. The cars coming in would pull in here. And what they could do is, because we have, we have eight feet over here, the cars could pull in. And then they could back out here and come out.
I think, I mean, of the property, to, to reach down the address, I think they did the same thing.
We did.
They brought back the first floor so there was some visible lines, just for, so you're not right on the street, but you could still pull in it.
But you could just take it into account. You can call this area, it's supposed to have it at an angle here. So when you come in, you can drive in at an angle. You can come in from here and pull in. But the reason it's at an angle is so if you back out, you can drive in this way. We would never ever run along this line. Because if you're backing out, you can't see which way--
Right. Especially if they put a new sidewalk in.
You back out onto your own property and then go out.
I think this would be appropriate for a review by DPW, too.
Well, wouldn't DPW have already reviewed this pursuant to the referral provision in the zoning bylaw?
I'm not sure if we've gotten anything from them. Have we gotten anything from DPW? Were they referred it?
Well, I spoke to Sean today, and he said that his comments remained the same from the last--
Which, which all had to do with the encroachment?
Yeah.
Right.
I don't have access to those. Do you have those with you?
Those what?
His comments. See, this is the, I mean, this is the problem. You've got this huge building envelope, and you're not, you don't want to commit on where you want to put this. I mean, if I, if I did the calculations, it's about a 3,500 square foot house?
Yeah, I think that's probably about right, yeah.
Okay. So I'm not sure exactly what your, what your thoughts are. In order to approve it, I think we'd have to, I would have to know a little bit, with a little bit greater detail, where on this lot you're looking to put that. So you could, you could, because we have a responsibility to make sure that, you know, the parking is, is safe. It's safe to come out. And I just don't think we can kick that, kick that down the road.
I do appreciate that you're talking about the garage parking issue that we're talking about.
Right, right.
Yeah. I think that we would be probably willing to agree that we will do something along the lines of what Paul just indicated.
Okay, but again, I would feel more comfortable in terms of like seeing something from DPW. And if it's, if they want to refer back to the other one, we just don't have that access tonight.
You see, I, my, my impression of this is that the application would have been sent to the DPW for a referral. And if they did not comment on that, then I take that, which is usually the case with DPW, then I take that to mean that they don't really care about the issue.
Well, they actually have under the bylaw, they have, I think it's 35 days, and I don't know when they received this application.
They received the application today.
Okay.
No. No, are you saying who received the application? When it was filed?
DPW received a copy of the application. And I followed up with Sean, and he had said that he saw the law, or Kevin saw the law. And Sean's comments were the same with regard to the parking.
And I don't know what the, I'm sorry, I don't know what those are.
So I will go look for the other files.
Yeah, it was a conversation strictly concerning the adjustment of the parking lot, which Kevin and I spoke about. And he, you know, he basically approved the plan to do that, so that the encroachment--
Parking lot?
The town parking lot, which is on top of the property.
We weren't talking about parking on this site.
Different issue.
Oh, 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 so you're not talking about this site?
No, nothing concerning this site.
Okay, so that's, you know--
I'm not sure the DPW would have control over that.
Well, I think they're input. I mean, they, it's, we were right on a corner there. You know, that's the problem. And that's a pretty narrow street.
Yeah, no, I understand your issue. I'd be willing to stipulate that, you know, if the board is disposed to granting an approval tonight subject to the satisfaction of the DPW on this issue, I'd be willing to agree to a condition of approval along those lines.
That kind of leaves it a little hanging. Okay, but I'll just table that for a minute. Anybody else have anything to say? Go ahead and deal with it at this point. Let me see.
Just let me just clarify for the record. The lot is not conforming as to size and frontage, right?
That is correct.
And the, the proposed structure will reduce the front setback nonconformity, will comply on the left side, comply at the rear, and will be, and will comply on the right side.
Correct. And in addition, is eliminating an existing nonconformity on the left side.
It's eliminating, you're right, you're right.
Eliminating--
It's eliminating the 6.4 feet, right. So you're reducing one and eliminating another one.
Right. And one of the reasons, you know, one of the reasons why we came forward with the application we did months ago was because the lot doesn't have a lot of depth to it.
That's for sure.
And, and so, it would have allowed a building envelope, or not envelope, but a foundation that would have been able to have been less in length along Jericho Road. But as a result of the necessity to have to comply with the 20-foot setback requirement, we've had to, and to have the building that we desire, that my clients desire to have, they needed to figure out something else. So they decided to elongate the building that way. I just want to add is, I know, you know, I think probably virtually every building in this, in this neighborhood is somehow a pre-existing nonconforming building unless it was, you know, rebuilt or whatever. And I would venture to say that just about every single lot in this neighborhood is a pre-existing nonconforming lot. And, you know, I kind of, you know, I went through a bit of a calculation to try and figure out, and Paul can explain it to you a little better. But even though the zoning bylaw does not have a lot coverage requirement, I wanted to basically take a capture of what is the existing lot coverage of the two existing buildings and compare it to the lot coverage that's being proposed. And, I mean, I know we're talking about having a 3,500 square foot home.
And what is the percentage increase?
The percentage increase, the difference--
For 700%, 719.
No, no, that's of the gross living area.
Well, I, right, I apologize.
Right.
It's, I'm sticking with my 719.4% increase. So then if you add the initial 100%, you're at 800. A 719% increase in gross floor area.
Right, and what I'm--
He's talking about the footprint.
I'm trying to, you know, I'm saying, look--
Right, no, that's why I wanted to get that before you went off on that--
Okay.
--tangent. I understand what you're saying.
The difference is of lot coverage would be, you know, Paul doesn't have a calculation on this plan for that, but you can extrapolate it by measuring it out based upon what's on the plan. And I calculated 592 square feet of lot coverage for the existing house and the existing garage versus 1,320 square feet for the proposed structure. And that would probably, you know, I don't know, depending on how, if you kind of slant the inside a little bit for the parking situation, it might even be less. So the way, you know, the way I see this, and then when you, you compare the buildings in the neighborhood. I had a Google Earth, I had a Google Earth photo just to take a look. I mean, here's the lot we're talking about. And, you know, look at all the other houses around it. I mean, basically, every house that's been reconstructed has grown up.
And where's our, where's our property on this?
Here.
Where's the actual?
The house, that's the garage.
Okay.
So I just wanted to give the board kind of a sense as, because I know the board strives to be consistent with its decisions from house to house. So it's a perfect example of, you know, increasing to 3,000 some odd square feet. It's not, it's probably more common in the neighborhood than uncommon.
Well, the question I was wondering, with a, with a first floor of 1320, based on your building envelope, you know, what's, what's the shape of that? How much of that building envelope is taken up?
Not sure I follow.
It's probably poorly worded.
The first floor of a house--
It's eight.
This is--
What's the potential?
This is, the blue is the building envelope--
Right.
--which meets all the setback requirements.
Right.
And if you put a garage in here, this area here is probably--
Well, I guess what she asked you, what is the square footage of the building envelope?
Yeah, that's--
The blue, is that, is that 13--
It's roughly 40 by 23.
It's about 1,320 square feet.
It's about 40 by 23, based on the drawing.
So essentially--
That's the footprint of the first floor.
Essentially, the footprint of the house would cover the whole entire building envelope.
Well, is there a building envelope here?
He's got, he's got a quarter foot cushion in the back and a quarter foot on each side. So, yeah.
I mean, the only exception would be with that angle on the front, on the left side for a garage.
So you're nonconforming existing from the rear, correct?
No.
That was at the market.
That garage actually conforms. You only need eight feet for a one-story garage in this, from your rear yard.
But, but we're moving--
So, so does--
We're moving further away.
I think we had this discussion a while back.
Right, right. Right, right.
I must have missed, sorry.
Is the, is, to determine whether it's not, it's nonconforming as to the rear, which building do we look at?
We looked at the garage.
You could look at either one, they both conform.
It's supposed to be 20 feet and it's only-
The single-story garage rear setback is eight feet.
Right. So it's not nonconforming to the rear.
Okay, that's the same discussion we had the last time.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and I just-
I just wanted to make sure we were being consistent.
What jumps out to me is more of a detrimental question. I'm trying to remember, I have the shortest tenure on the board of anyone here, but allowing a building to increase to this extent, this close to the road, where we're faced with a garage door opening and a car backing out this close to the road? So I see a much larger increase. The increase on its own doesn't necessarily concern me as more detrimental, but I'm seeing with the prior structure where we had room for a car to park, now I'm seeing potentially a garage door opening at the lot line. And that creates a detriment question for me. Substantially more detrimental, I don't know. Again, I'm sure that we could find some other houses in the neighborhood that do the same thing, but that was something that jumped out to me and made this slow down from a slam dunk in my mind.
If this, if this garage was at the lot line here, you know, if this is where the garage door was, then it isn't where it's going to be, but in a sense, it's no different than what's here now. You pull in, you can't turn around.
Well, but turning around and seeing and whatnot is a different thing.
If you pull in front of the garage here and you back out, you're backing straight out onto the street.
It's too assumed. You make a good point, because the house is there.
The design we looked at was having this on an angle, so the cars would pull in and there's room, because we've got eight feet here now, which is, which is the width of a lane on a street. The cars would back out, back up into here. This is gone now, and there's nothing in the setback. Cars can back out this way and go straight out. You can't do that in the building over here. This building over here, they back straight out onto the street.
So I understand this, but the situation you were just describing is giving up on some of the envelope that's included in this application, or no? In the first floor?
The ground isn't used, can't be used for anything except parking or incidental storage, so that's wide open.
So, okay.
So there couldn't be a garage underneath?
Well-
Well, you could park a car, but it's not what I was describing.
With flood vent openings, because that isn't allowed use in a-
So an enclosed garage would not be allowed?
No, you could still do that. You'd just need flood open, you'd need flood vents.
Yeah, this has to have flood vents.
Right, I follow you.
Here's a suggestion about the garage, because this is my big concern, and it is in the neighborhood, we did exactly this. I believe it was directly across the street on the corner of Lighthouse and Jericho. And we rejiggered it or something, or the applicant figured a way to rejigger it and make it make sense. Not having a architectural drawing here, I'm looking at it, the house, the existing 167, if I scale it out approximately, the existing garage at 167 is eight feet off the roadway. Right, because you've got that covered deck above, but the garage's door is underneath it. If we were to say in our decision that the midpoint of any proposed garage door would be not closer than eight feet, that would allow you the option to go right across eight feet with an overhang underneath, wouldn't be enough to park a car there, it wouldn't be really practical, but diagonally, that eight foot is exactly what you want. It would create a 20, about a 23-foot wall at a 45 perpendicular on that corner. The midpoint of the garage door would be eight feet back, and you'd be able to drive in and get all the way underneath your property, the proposed dwelling, with the garage space that you wanted to have access, and you'd have the turnaround. I'm just trying to give you a way to-
Move forward.
-keep the town happy with an eight-foot setback of the midpoint of your garage door, but you could angle it and part of your garage door would be closer equal point back.
David? Yeah, with the permission of the board, I'm David Blodwell, I'm from Sycamore, we own the 169. And also, when we're reading the motion, we have a Miami address where our children go to school in the winter, but we have summer on 167, so whoever may live in the property. Even today, we park in 169 because that is our property. When we back out of that property, we haven't had any issues in terms of site or safety. That's a very big intersection, there's a stop sign there. And, you know, you can see even that in 169. So I'm not, I'm not saying that that's not a concern, but I appreciate the comments. We have here my architect who built 167. There seems to be opportunities to make it safer with a slanting idea that could be a way to do it. But I think even if we didn't slant, and we just decided to park next to the house and no garage, it would be even better than today because we are removing that house in off of five inches of town property. So it would be even better than what we use every day now.
Half an inch of town property.
Well, I think it went three feet into the town property.
I'm sorry.
You gave it three and a half feet. So you do a better job with your site distances, but Dick?
I live at 153 Jericho. My name's Tim Williamson. I'm the trustee at that four-unit property. We back out. I've got two teenage sons that back out, and then they had a safety issue, but thank God, I mean, but the street is busy at times. Most of the time it's not busy, even in the summer, most of the time it's not busy. And I've never had an issue where you've even had to check the brakes really hard because you weren't, you couldn't see what was going on in that corner. But I can understand where you guys come from, I just haven't seen that as big of a-
In the design of your property, you do have sightlines because it's open. That's-
So just one point of view, that's all.
Yeah, but that's my point, not knowing what you're planning to do. Sightlines or garage doors not closer to, the midpoint not closer to, which gives you the option to angle it eight feet, which is exactly what you have at 167. Moving everything back eight feet on a, what are we talking, a 26-foot deep, a 25-foot deep structure, is only going to give you, will give you 15 feet. It would be compact, it might not be, you know, 63 Lincoln, but going in straight isn't necessarily practical. If you lose eight feet of underground parking, but open carport as opposed to closed garage would still be an option. I'm just saying if you close the garage, you've got, you lose the sightlines that you have at your property, and the, that's what I'm concerned with. It's, and I realize it may not be a big issue.
Excuse me, have we opened this to?
We haven't.
Okay, because I, there's things that are going along, and I'd like to park in too.
Yeah, and we haven't, and we haven't. We haven't opened it.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff opened it, with all due respect, Jeff.
Who's the applicant?
Mr. Kamau is the applicant, and that's different. That's certainly different. Right, right. Which kind of brings us back then to, you very specifically said, we don't have, we don't have a, we don't have any renderings at all, not even concept drawings. When we were here the last time, it was represented that it was going to be very similar to the house next door.
Well, if I say, and I believe it will be-
Yeah.
But if I say it, we're going to make it very similar to the house next door, I don't frankly want a condition of approval in the zoning permit that holds me to that, you know, like-
I understand you don't. I wouldn't either if I was in your shoes.
Yeah, so my, you know, I understand the board is articulating an issue of safety, and I think it makes sense, and I think the Kamaus have indicated that they'd be willing to work with that. And we can work with Bob, we can work with the DPW. That's going to be the footprint, whether there's an angle or not, because that would be the, you know, the footprint, for instance, of the second floor above it. So to address the issue of safety, I mean, I think it would make sense for the architect to sit down with Bob and Bob to articulate, would, you know, be satisfied with the safety issue. And then we would go to the drawing board and figure something out. You know, I'm very reticent to continue the hearing and have the applicant spend significant sums of money designing something and then be told that it's not good enough. So-
What about the eight-foot setback for the center point of the garage door? What are the thoughts on that?
Ted's mind is, is great. My mind doesn't, I have a hard time, you know, understanding that. I don't know if, you know, if the applicant has an opinion on that. It sounds reasonable to me, but I, I think that the applicant should have some design flexibility on this issue, try and figure out what actually is safe here. But I don't know if you guys have an opinion, or if Dick, if Dick's here and he wants to speak to that issue, but-
Well, I'll tell you, one of my concerns when we're just sort of chit-chatting about it, is that none of us that I know of sitting here have any expertise in designing, you know, I don't know, I don't even know. Well, no, I'm talking about, you know, have an understanding of turnarounds. I mean, people design garages for safety and access to roads with a lot of different considerations. I couldn't even begin to articulate what they are. I have great concerns, just like the last application, about the lack of the renderings. I think we need to again consider this, you know, its impact on the neighborhood. That is a almost 60-foot wide building that is on the street. And I'm concerned about safety of pedestrians, I'm concerned about traffic. You know, if we had some idea of what, I'm not saying go out and spend, you know, $15,000 on an architect, but I think it would be fair to say this is kind of a general idea of what we're doing, again, I think considering what we're struggling with us on the last application, but, I mean, that's, you know, I said it the last time, and I'm going to say it again, this is, this is the heart of Situate. It's Lighthouse area. And, you know, I think we have to be very careful about, you know, there's a balance between people's right to build and people's, they're coming before us and asking permission to build this, okay? And I think we do have the right, to go back to the argument again, I think we do have the right to consider what it's going to look like. Because otherwise, how can we begin to determine whether it's detrimental to the neighborhood? I would be very disappointed if the same, if we had the same house just turned on its end. I think it's, the one house in Situate, please, the one house, the one place in Situate people love, I'm sorry, planning board, but people love to hate, is CVS. It's a canyon, it's awful. And then you look across the street at the-
Beautiful Situate Palata Building.
Well-
You did a good job.
You did a much better job than CVS, okay? But I'm talking across, directly across the street where the galley's located and those little apartments, there's a real charm in that, okay? And, you know, it's, it's, again, no, we don't dictate style, but, you know, we have to, we have to consider its effect on the neighborhood.
But this is exactly my point, is if I agree to continue this hearing to allow a general concept to be designed for the safety of the garage and that issue, I don't want to be sitting here and then saying, all right, now we need to see, you know, renderings of what this is going to look like. And so, I mean, if the consensus of the board on kind of a straw poll scenario is that this application would be, you know, the board would make the finding that's requested to allow this building to be constructed, then I would, based upon that, agree to continue it, go and have this issue looked at and properly vetted and brought back before you, but only that issue. I don't want to have to re-argue this entire application. That's my, that's my issue. So, I mean, if that's what the consensus of the board is, then-
I'm not sure we've covered all the issues.
I know, I know.
Yeah, we didn't begin to. I mean, again, I, if you're asking us to say, well, you know, this is a big building. It's a small, small lot. Maybe it's not a big building sort of globally, but it's a tiny lot, okay? And there is a tiny house. And this is, this is something that's going to live. Obviously, I'm sure it's going to be extremely well constructed, but it's going to live there for a very long time.
Look at the houses on that Google Earth photo that I showed you.
Take a look at them.
Yeah.
Yeah, take a look at them.
Right.
They're not designed, you know, the one next to-
This board has allowed those houses. This board has allowed every house in that neighborhood.
Please, please, okay. Ma'am, sorry ma'am, okay?
Paul?
No.
Paul, the lot coverage calculations, just run that through.
So there's, I did a, I did a calculation of lot coverage, we're five or six homes in this area. The average of those, the average including this one was 47%. This proposed lot is 39%. When I say lot coverage, I'm talking the area of that lot that would have a structure on it. Most of the lots in this neighborhood are subpar. Most of the houses that have been torn down and rebuilt are much larger than the houses similar to the one that's there right now. Situate's not a summer community like it used to be anymore. And one of the things, quite frankly, that's driving these houses to be this large is the assessments on the land value. And typically, what we see is, whatever somebody pays for a house lot, the price of that home is two to three times and sometimes more than the price they paid for the lot. For example, if someone pays $500,000 for a house lot, the house you see that's built on there is going to be between $1 million and 1.5, maybe higher depending on amenities. This is what's happening everywhere in Situate on these small lots. Look at the, you know, if you go back to prior to the storm of '78, I used to live in this area, most of the homes, well, a lot of the homes along Turner Road, even Jericho Road, they were single-family cottages. When they got wiped out, the people who were lucky enough to have FEMA flood insurance, they didn't pay $250,000 maximum then, they paid to rebuild the house. These one-story houses were being reconstructed as three-story houses. On lots that were, some of them were, some of these lots were 25, 35 feet wide, this is what's happened going back to the last 40 or 50 years. Situate's not a summer community anymore. People are living in these houses year-round. And again, when you see your tax assessments going up on the lots, that's one of the things that's driving these houses to be what they are, is the values there. This is your highest tax base in the town of Situate, along the waterfront and two or three blocks back, okay? The taxes on this property now are relatively low, because I'm all part of Mr. Kamau, I think they're relatively low. But once these lots are sold and they assess the new homeowners, the taxes, the value of these lots are going through the roof.
And if we want to talk, you know, aesthetics, you know, it's worth mentioning, I know, it's worth mentioning though, it's worth mentioning that aesthetically, by any objective standard, what's there now is also not the image that we want to project for the town of Situate.
No, I don't disagree there.
So to put-
But I can close my eyes on that one. I can't close my eyes on this one if it's covering that kind of space on the lot.
But Sarah, but regarding how much space on the lot it covers, it's not even intensifying any of the dimensional setbacks, and it's lessening one and it's in compliance with all of the others.
It's going to lessen two.
Isn't it intensifying the front?
No.
It's extending along, it's extending along the width of the front. So where you have previously, I don't know what the dimension is.
But that's our intensification of lot area. That's what we always say, unless that's the only-
I think it's an intensification of the front setback.
So it's intensifying the front.
Yeah.
But the counterargument to that, which we've made, is that, is it really an intensification because of width if it's staying within the side setbacks?
It is still, absolutely without question.
It's more running feet which are within, but can we hold that against an applicant when they're keeping it within the side setbacks that are required?
I don't think it's about holding it still.
The concern I have is it's so close to the street.
Right, right.
All of it, so we're taking, I forget what the width, because I don't see it here, or maybe I just can't figure it out.
Well, that's-
From here to here.
But it's not in the street. Yeah, it's no longer in the street, and if one part of the house is within a foot of the street, or all of it's within a foot of the street-
Yeah, I didn't think it was the number we-
The concern for me comes cars coming in and out of that part of the house, which is something that jumps out. The rest of the house isn't going to move.
Twenty? Approximately 28.
Yeah, so we're going from 28-feet wide house to what?
Almost 60.
Yeah, so-
57, 58.
160 along the street.
Which is not uncommon for houses in that area.
If this was set back further from the street, I would have no problem with it, Jeff. It's right hard on the street, so that's-
How can you set it back from further from the street if you have to hold the rear setback?
That's, that's why I was asking the question before.
Let's, you guys want to consider a setback variance on the rear to meet the...
I wish this house could be pushed back further into the back.
Let's go back to the question...
If you set it back where you'd like it to be, then the house would be about 14 or 15 feet in depth.
I understand.
Well, nobody, nobody's expecting to ever get a full front setback. I think that's pretty clear, you know?
I think one of the questions here is the length of the house along the street. 60 feet is really, it sounds big, but it really isn't that big if you take a 32-foot colonial, traditional 32-foot wide, 24, 28 feet deep. With a two-car garage, that's over 60 feet. If you take a ranch and you put a two-car garage in the end of a ranch, you're over 80 feet. So this is not an enormous house.
I hear you, I hear you.
It's enormous for the area, that's all. It's enormous for where it's at.
May I? It's really not enormous for the area.
Please, please, you'll have your chance.
But the concern here, the concern here is about frontage on the street. What I'm wondering, I thought when we had this discussion in the past, that an accessory detached dwelling could be considered the rear yard setback, the non-conformity of 14 feet. Is that correct?
No.
If it was non-conforming, that's what we covered last time.
But it is.
No, because it's single-story.
That's what I have.
If it was two-story, that's where we settled last time.
But the side setback.
But no, honestly, I mean, this could be one of those scenarios that it really does make sense to consider a setback variance to basically allow the plan that was there the last time.
I don't think we have such a thing in Situate.
What do you mean?
You can have a variance for anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can vary anything.
You can grant a variance for a setback.
You granted one at 153.
A setback variance?
That, no, whatever, that six-unit apartment building, which was converted to a four-unit condominium.
Oh, yeah, that's the one decision I've regretted ever since I made it. Seriously. I seriously have.
Now, that building was right on the street. It might have been into the street a little bit.
Terrible decision.
What we did was to push that back, and because there's a town parking lot behind it, the board found that pushing that back to give you more room is, you know, to increase the setback from the property line at the street, there's no impact to the parking lot in the back. And that's exactly what we did. I think that rear yard setback's only 12 feet. And the plan I submitted last time, what I did was, I had an average setback for the rear yards of the buildings on this side of the street that did come before this board. And those, those buildings were much closer than 20 feet to the rear property line. And on that one particular building I just talked about, I think we pushed that back five feet, something like that.
Thanks, Hattam. I'm trying to find a way to, I'd like to see it not as close to the street. I'm not as concerned with the size of it. The side yard setbacks are defined. It's going to be elevated. It's going to be a fairly large structure. But if you look at it from a practical standpoint, it's not enormous, it's not terribly outrate. And if you compare it to the other dimensional sizes on Lighthouse Point, it's not that far off. And some of them are, you know, quite attractive and improvements from what was there. It will never go back to being a neighborhood of small cottages. It just won't. So we have to take that into consideration, accept that.
Just this issue, I mean, when you're looking at this on the plan, you could, it appears as if the edge of the street is right at the edge of the building.
But you have a sidewalk.
The edge of the layout is, is there, but the edge of the pavement is gotta be, there's a sidewalk, then there's some grass.
No, I understand that we're not on the edge of the pavement. But the edge of the layout is still the issue.
The safety issue, though.
I might have exaggerated a little bit when I said hard on the street, but it is pretty close.
But that's why the eight, that's why the eight foot on the, on 167 is reasonable, because you then still have the sidewalk and the other space to the pavement.
The problem, the reason why the building is as long as it is, is because there's no depth to work with on this lot.
Understood. I'm not worried about how long it is. I'm worried about how close it is. And I, and I think that the angle is helpful, and I appreciate your comment that my brain works that way, but I'm, I'm just simply looking at how do we, how do we structure it to give you the flexibility that you'd like? Because I think evidence suggests that in the past you've done some good things and...
It'd be a variance.
A variance? I think, I, how could, how could you justify the variance? How can you, can you help us to reach the threshold of a variance on this?
Yeah, I could help. If the board felt it was, it's safe to put the building four feet off the sidewalk versus one, that would be logic.
Yeah, but that's not the standard for variance.
The shape?
And Jeff knows it, yeah.
The shape of the lot, you know?
It's tough. It's a square lot, and it's...
But it's not deep. And you have, and you have a safety issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's overfit. I'm thinking of it in terms of a challenge from the rear butter, and I don't see...
Rear butter's the town of Situate.
Well, I understand.
Well, expect the challenge.
But still, and the town could sell it tomorrow, or not tomorrow, but they could go through the process. I, I don't, you know, it's a good distance from the back, maybe it doesn't need to be that far back.
A variance standard, and you want to take that risk and go up to the court and...
I don't, I'm not sure I see the variance standard.
What you could do, the fact that the building, where we proposed it...
Well, my concern is, and well...
Is that too close to the street?
Well, no, not the building. But while I don't think it's necessary that we see architectural drawings, what we don't have here, and what we often have on single-family homes, is a driveway or a garage depiction. Here, if we approve this application as it sits right now, you would be allowed to put a garage door in the middle of this, and you could have a car backing out from the middle this close to the street.
It's not, it's not practical that...
Well, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is. But, but that's what we could potentially be approving, and that at least raises some detrimental questions for me. I'm not even sure that's substantially more detrimental, but it's no longer a slam dunk. And that's what raised some concern for me. If we saw a jog back here, or if we saw an applicant willing to agree to a condition that a garage door center point, because I understood what you were saying with the rotation, or flush, whatever, was X number of feet further back, and obviously that wouldn't affect the second floor, I am a lot more comfortable then if that was the case.
I'm not at least comfortable with it just sort of broadly saying eight feet. I want to hear from somebody who has, you know, either somebody from the town, either DPW, to look at a design to say, you know, this kind of a turnaround would, is necessary because throwing numbers out, whether eight feet, 15, or 20 feet, I don't care what they are, to me, they're, I mean, there's people who, as you know, experts who, you know, spend their, spend their professional career figuring out what, what is proper if we're a safe access to look at the neighborhood. We don't really have a good site, we don't really have good, I mean, this is no offense, Paul, because you know, but we don't really have a real clear how this is in relationship to other driveways, to the roadway. It's just, to me, it's not real clear. Sidewalks.
I've offered, you know, what I think to be a good, a good middle ground here, which is, I just want to get all the other stuff out of the way, and I, and I, I would continue this hearing for that purpose. I'll have something, you know, go to DPW and talk to them.
Maybe right now we get to other, other points aside from the parking that the board would like to address.
I don't think this requires a traffic study.
I'm not asking for a traffic study.
I know. You just want somebody to say, you know, somebody who...
Somebody who knows what they're talking about.
Just to say, I'm happy with that.
Well, and I told you, I'm still looking for some sort of rendering, because if this is a sheer wall going down Jericho Road, I got a problem with it.
But your application doesn't require...
Doesn't matter. We, we do have the right to request anything that would help us aid in our decision. What I would suggest, it's because it's getting late and, you know, we're not going to be here till midnight, you can decide what you want to do, whether or not continue, but I thought it might be helpful to hear from, from anybody in the audience to know what other concerns they may or may not have, either speaking in support or, you know, concerned about it. So we can consider, and then if we, if we come back, at least we have more of the issues laid out.
I respect that you have a difference of opinion with the issue of aesthetics. That's why when we started the hearing, I indicated that this is a two to three vote. And so, if the, if the board, maybe, maybe it makes sense for the board to make a motion because perhaps somebody would agree with you and, and, and vote that, you know, it makes sense to me for some kind of motion which is motion to continue the hearing subject to that one particular issue.
I think, I think we should hear from the public.
I think so.
See if there are any other issues, and then, and then get to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're now going to open it.
I am, I appreciate very much, excuse me, I'm Jane Analado of 152 Jericho Road, and I do appreciate the three members that I called. The two of you have mentioned the aspect of safety. I think safety is the number-one issue. I have other issues with this, but they're not to be addressed by this board. Safety is an issue, and this is not a quiet street. This is a street that cars fly down, and I am near the end of the street. This street filters down to Turner Road. The cars come off of Lighthouse and Rebecca at this point also. So you have cars coming around the corner on Turner. You have cars coming from Lighthouse and Rebecca Road. You have pedestrians going to a general store around the corner. That is where, around the corner down to Turner Road. The sidewalk for that area is on that side of the street. You're talking about cars on the street. How about pedestrians on the sidewalk going around Turner Road coming on to Jericho? I think these are very serious concerns. And I have lived at my property since 1977, and I've raised kids there, and I can tell you that the traffic there is awful. It is not a quiet street at all. Summer, no winter at all. There are other considerations, too. You talked about this long property of 60 feet facing onto Jericho. Across the street, Two Lighthouse Road, a 5,000-square-foot house on a 4,800-square-foot lot. The only thing that doesn't make it detrimental to the street is the fact that the lot goes in. It does not go along. It is a monstrosity. It is a box that should never, I know you have no beautification rights, but that property should never have been allowed to have been built in that area. It is a major detriment. Mr. Maravito speaks of the property taxes there. I have very high taxes there. I did, my husband and I reconstructed our house after the blizzard of '78. We had an 1,100-square-foot home before the blizzard. I now still have an 1,100-square-foot home. I did not raise it to be a bigger home. I did appreciate the character of the neighborhood, regardless of the taxes associated with it. Homes should not be larger in that community, to that area, just because the taxes are higher there. Yes, they are. But that doesn't say and give license to anyone who buys a small lot the right to think that he can build a house greater than 3,000 square feet. That's incredible. That was his choice to buy the lot. But it should not be his choice to be detrimental to the neighborhood and to destroy the character of the neighborhood just because he has the right to do it. I'm sorry, he doesn't. And my neighborhood is being destroyed. I'm looking at a, it's a cabin. I'm looking at one side, all high-rises. I'm looking at the other side, the two lighthouses, a high-rise, a single-family high-rise. You want to do that because you have the right, they have the right to do it zoning? I think there's something wrong with that. But I'm glad you did raise the issue of safety. And excuse me for going on about the character of my neighborhood and hoping to maintain the quality of it. But I think your issue of safety is a valid one. And they don't need a traffic study, but I do think that the DPW should be viewed. Look at it. Look at the walking traffic, not just the street, the cars. Look at the walking traffic, and how much is this? And you have, you don't know how many young people are walking today, these days, the lighthouses, or to the general store. I see it, that this is a serious concern. So thank you. That's what I understand.
Thank you. Elaine?
Elaine Bozum, I don't live in the neighborhood, but I've lived my whole life in Situate, and I've been down, I have friends down there all the time. My concern is backing out on the other side of the street. I guess you'd call it the east side, because you've got that corner coming from Rebecca and Lighthouse, and it's blind. But on the, on the side where those new condos are in this house they're talking about, it's kind of straight. I can see. When I'm at my friend's house on that side of the street, I can back out. On the other side, I try to back in so I can pull up, because there is a lot of traffic there. I also have another question, was just a point I've noticed as far as parking. It's the blind curve on the other side of the street. Where this particular lot is, is straight. You can see, okay? There's a sidewalk, there's pedestrians, but you can see. But Mr. Boyajin was here. I heard the board say, "Mr. Boyajin brought this renderings, and we don't need renderings. It's not required." But now, Mr. Camo didn't bring renderings, and I hear, "Oh, you should have brought renderings." It's either got to be, you should bring your renderings, or you shouldn't. But we've told two different people, two different answers. And also, I would think, regardless of the rendering, because he can change it, we know that now, wouldn't the building inspector, now, I don't know the answer to this question, but if he sees plans and the building department determines that it's not safe, isn't that the person that says, "No"? Maybe he doesn't have that power. I honestly don't know. But I understand your concern with safety, and it's mine, and it's everyone's. But I would think that the building inspector would reject the plans.
I mean, I guess I'm not quite sure how to answer it. I mean, he certainly, his, his job is, and tell me if I'm wrong, primarily to make sure that the plans are in compliance with the state building code.
Okay, I didn't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly a safety issue, but, you know, to, to ask him to evaluate the placement of the particular structure on a particular lot at a particular location, I don't think that's really his job.
It wasn't a loaded question. I just didn't know whose, what department determined that, okay?
Yeah.
But my, I do seriously mean that you told two different, both applicants, two different things about it.
Oh, I've, no, I don't think I did. I said I wanted renderings.
The boy.
Yeah, well, no.
I'm not...
I mean, there's, it seems like the only, and tell me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but it seems like the only rendering they're worried about is the garage opening. I'm worried about rendering of the building itself. I see this again as, is this is the jewel of Situate. It's, you know, Lighthouse area, and I want to make sure that there's a piece of property, I mean, there's a structure on this property that is going to, you know, reflect the character and of the property as opposed to, just, just make sure we can build it out as far as we can, so we can get as much on this little lot as we possibly can. Just not, I think, just, I, I, I mean, I, I'm not going to, you know, we can't reach inside the structure and say, "Ah, you know, I think it's better with two bedrooms than three." But I believe we have the right to have, to have some input into the exterior of the structure. So, again, it's, it's appropriate for the neighborhood, and it's consistent and is not detrimental to the...
Substantially.
Substantially detrimental. That's true.
Then what's there now?
Then what's there now?
Which is closer, which is in the road.
I kind of like it. So, yes, yes, yes.
That you haven't heard from me already. Rose O'Neal, 148 Jericho Road. And I believe this, did you, Mr. and Mrs. Camo?
Yeah.
Well, I want, hello. It's nice to meet you. I've been a bunch of, nice to meet both of you. And who's the architect?
And who's the architect? I like that house at 167, whoever did that. Those are my concerns. My concern is the safety. Some people have to make appointments. I've been at that house since before birth. Take a good look at the eyes. It's over 70 years, and things have changed there, and most of it's for the good. I mean, even the house of my brother, though, at 148, I think it was a beautiful addition to the neighborhood. Things change. Styles change. That doesn't bother me. My concern is safety. Now that you have no picture of anything, my concern is, is it really going to be 3,700 square feet of actual, let's get the word straight, gross floor area? Because that, 3,700 square feet in that particular spot, I think is going to be detrimental to the turning on Turner Road, the turning, Turner to Jericho. We've got the general store there. I think it's a great asset to the community, but now we have trucks that deliver. They're big trucks. So there is an issue. I know you haven't been there that long. I think you're a great guy. Your bike is lovely. I don't want to come off like some kind of a, you know, the Italian in the neighborhood, which I am.
Do you have two kitchens?
Huh? What did you say? I have relatives in Sicily, and, do you? Oh, good. So, cut on. All right. We're on. So, that's my question. I understand that by going by a, for a finding, as opposed to the variance, which is extremely difficult for this board to make a determination on, there's a lot of things to be covered. It's much easier. And some of the bylaws that were quoted here, as I read them, which, it wasn't easy. It's more, it gave more, you guys had more leniency in how you actually acted on this particular application. But now seeing that we really don't have a vision of where this parking is going to be, which is a big concern to me. Look, we've got more young families in the neighborhood than ever, and, I mean, on six over the half, all those avenues, young families, two or three kids, they've got their stuff and all those things. They're walking. People walk to the Lighthouse. It is safety. The house next door is lovely. I don't have a problem with it. To compare other homes is not correct. You should not be comparing other homes. Each home is unique, and that's the way it is. My concern is, as my sister-in-law eloquently put, she's a school, she was a school teacher, I remember, I'm like, that's awful. And the sidewalks, the integrity of the sidewalk from Otis Road to Wampata. Now, our neighborhood doesn't need granite curving, but I would like to see that asphalt sidewalk that maintained from Otis Road to Wampata. It's been compromised in some spots. This area particularly, it's been compromised. Not, it's, the Rosa Rosas are a big part of it. That's a big concern for me. I'm not looking for a particular color. Is that my house?
That is your house.
And what was so wrong with this house?
It's a beautiful home.
A beautiful home. Huh? My brother built that.
It's a beautiful home.
Yes, there you go. I like that one. And to be honest with you, I don't want to come off as some kind of a negative neighbor because I'm not, I pay taxes there. I want that. I want your property to look good. It enhances the neighborhood. It's the safety, the safety, the safety, the safety. And what you did across the street, it was on recording here, and it was listed in the dug-in, great human thing. He's the one that actually said those words. They were discussing Jericho Road, Nutyard Property, and he said, Two Lighthouse Road, and he said, remember the monstrosity that got away from us. I don't want to see that happen again. That is. I mean, I'm sure they're wonderful people. Friends, neighbors, they come back, they go, what the heck is that? My brother came, he says, what the heck is that? It really, from the front, the beach side is just, it's just, I don't want to see that happen again. I never said anything then, and, you know, I didn't want to. I want him to build a house, and I know he'll do a good job. I left this, I left it. I've set up 200 people. It's how it's going to be built, how it's going to be set, and when people walk on that sidewalk, are they going to be, feel like they have to step off that silly asphalt? And that's where I have a problem. I do it with my dog sometimes. I step off. It's safety, and if they can come up with something to consider all that, I'm happy they're in the neighborhood. That's all I have to say, I think. But, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to clarify. Your points are awesome, both of you have done a nice job. My point of view was just backing up. I didn't have a problem backing up and being safe. I didn't. So, again, there are cars that scream around at night.
Oh, they do.
In the middle of the night.
And you were.
Yep. They do scream out in the middle of the night, but where I come from, it's not a lot of traffic, so.
Yeah, but, hey, look, I can't fathom that. Don't talk to me. I've worked in Boston for 40 years. Come on, what are you saying?
So, anyway, all I know is the structure that's there now is hideous. It's basically a place where people throw their trash on the way out as they're screaming down the street in the middle of the night. Empty nips and beer cans. I don't know how you keep up with it because I know they have seen them pick trash up there. I'm looking forward to something nice, and I'm sure, and if their track record proves they're going to build something nice, so.
Anyone else?
Cecilia Camo, definitely. And I think we.
Owner of the property.
I'm sorry?
Cecilia is the owner of the property.
Yes.
Yes. No, I mean, I'm speaking as an owner, also as a citizen, and of course, our intention is the best intention, and we will keep it under a tasteful manner where you see next to work pretty much what we'll do, and this will be a home for our children, for our grandchildren as well. We're intending to live here, to move here, and I truly appreciate your feedback and all of your feedback. But, and, I don't know, we definitely, we think about the sidewalk, and to me, to be honest with you, it's a concern for myself as well, and more than once, I'm brooming and brushing the sand off the sidewalk so that the ladies can walk by and destroy them and the same. So, I'm trying, so it's a concern for myself as well. I mean, I walk my dog, I see children, so obviously, we will build something with common sense and respecting the lives of the neighborhood as well.
And no surprise. True. And I truly, and that's one of the reasons I want to move up here, because I truly treasure
the small community here and embracing the community, first and embracing the community. And I think it's great that you truly fiercely protect the neighborhood. It's very nice, and you have to, because you know what?
I do love here.
And because that works towards the neighbor and neighbor there. But don't worry, it's my duty as a person, a citizen, and as a local as well.
I can see that, what you did, it had nothing to do with.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm, you know what? I'm sorry, this is not the forum for sort of jitching, but like that. But, no, no, you can't be talking back and forth. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize, yes, ma'am.
166 Jericho Road, right across the street, okay? That whole street is being built. When your applicant bought the house on 167, it was a shack. He built a nice house. The house that he bought next door is a shack. Now, what do you guys want to see? You want to see the shack, or you want to build a house there? I mean, I think you ought to work with him to find out, evidently, the dimensions are okay, right? From what I'm hearing, the dimensions are okay?
What we're concerned about is the proximity to the street.
There's a number of things we're concerned about.
Build a house. It's better than what's there. I mean, Sichuan is changing. I'm in real estate. I see it all the time. You go to the cliffs, there's houses being taken down, big houses. Guy wants to build a house, let him build it.
Thank you.
And I'm right across the street, I don't mind. I've been doing the traffic, I have a humongous house right next door to me.
Two Lighthouse Road.
Yeah, right next door to me. He's a terrific, they're terrific neighbors, they have a big house. I have to put up with it. I mean.
And you have problems.
Yeah, you know, I have, I put up with it. So, I mean, come on, give the guy a break, let him build his house.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to reinforce what I said about, I think DPW not to do a traffic study, but to do a review. I think it's an important consideration. As Rosemary pointed out, there are, there are three trucks that go to the general store. There's a lot of traffic, and there's a lot of good traffic. I think all of these things need to be considered. I am not in opposition to DPW building houses. I hope they do. I do think they might feel a bit of trepidation from people who have been in the neighborhood because Two Lighthouse Road, although on record, they may have spent a fortune on the house, but it is a monstrosity. It is a brown box, okay? And that's all that it is, no architectural detail here. I'm sorry that that preceded you, and that would be a concern that I might have. The house you built there, it wasn't a shack. That was a foundation. That was the existing that you built upon. I think you did fine with it. But just to reiterate, please, I would appreciate a traffic review.
Thank you. All right, Jeff, it's almost a quarter to 11:00.
I haven't been up this New Year's Eve.
I don't think that this application is that difficult. I think that this board has the ability, and certainly has, has the ability to vote the issue subject to DPW's review of the garage. And, you know, I think that, I think the board should entertain a motion to that effect.
You're asking DPW to make a determination in a vacuum, and, you know.
Well, they have to be satisfied, so they're gonna, they're not going to make a determination until they're satisfied.
Well, I can't, but, yeah, but I don't know what your client, you and your client are going to come up with, or your client's going to come up with, the architect, and, I still have, my concerns remain the size of, also remain the size of it running down so close to the street. And if, and again, you think a finding, I think it requires a special permit.
I'm willing to fight that in court.
Well.
Where in the code or elsewhere do you see that a finding would be needed by two out of the three voting members? That's what I'm missing.
Your bylaw?
Yeah. Or elsewhere.
Section.
I might be with you on the finding versus special permit, for whatever that's worth. I'm one of five.
Let's just quickly walk through Section 810.2, all right? Section 810.2 allows.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me get it.
Quick, understand where you are there on the finding. I'm asking specifically about a finding not needing to be unanimous vote.
Okay, perfect. If you look at the powers of the board, Section 950.2. All right, that's where I was. There's four different powers that this board has. The authority to hear appeals for enforcements, the authority to grant special permits, the authority to grant variances, this is 950.2, and the authority to grant permits under 48 Section 6. Right there is where you got it.
Permits.
Permits, exactly.
Right, and I'm still with you, I just need to get to where it doesn't need to be unanimous.
Section 6 is findings.
Exactly. 48 Section 6 is a finding.
Does 48 Section 6 lay out majority versus unanimous?
That's case law.
Okay, and that's just what I'm asking.
The Shrewsbury-Ellsberry case, but 48 Section 6 says the board, the board, the special permit granting authority, the permit granting authority.
I'm familiar with, I agree.
There's differences, right?
Yep.
The permit granting authority, it doesn't say special permit granting authority.
I'm totally with you there.
Has to make the finding. 48 Section 9 deals with special permits. Totally different.
Completely with you there.
But that's exactly.
I'm just trying to get to where findings can be.
That's how you get into it, is 950.2 says special permits, variances, and then 48 Section 6 findings.
I'm with you. I'd just like to understand the case that goes to two out of three versus three out of three.
Right, but 48 Section 6 refers to special permits.
Right. 48 Section 6 in that particular area of 48 Section 6.
This is conflict of interest, but he's.
Excuse me, I am sorry, but please don't interrupt the hearing, okay? Honestly, I will ask you to leave.
Forty, the portion of 48 Section 6 which we're talking about, which is.
Which is what?
Which is pre-existing non-conforming structures may be altered or amended.
I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it, and so tell me where in this.
It says upon a finding, right?
Pre-existing agreement may be extended or altered to providing no such substantial ownership even unless there is a finding by the permit granting authority.
Bingo. A finding.
But that doesn't mean you don't get a special permit.
Permit granting authority, not special permit granting authority.
And 810.2 calls for a finding, not a special permit.
Exactly.
I'm entirely with you there. My question was solely to understand how many votes you.
The Shrewsbury-Ellsberry case talks about majority and supermajority, and makes a distinction between the special permit granting authority and the permit granting authority. And it says, when the Board of Appeals is making a finding, they're acting in the capacity as a permit granting authority, not a special permit granting authority.
Okay.
And that's where the supermajority and the majority situation comes in.
But you need permit, you need, you are requesting, there, you've invoked several, what, five or six different?
What I need is a finding pursuant to 810.2 and a special permit for the purposes of the floodplain overlay, which is a different standard altogether.
And we haven't even talked about that, and it's 10 of 11.
It's the easiest call on earth. There's three.
I spoke about it earlier.
And it's also in Paul's application.
And you've got 830, 950.2B, 950.2D.
Yeah, or other.
Right, right.
I'm putting them out there because of this very issue.
Right.
Which is why I called 950.2.
Here's your problem. I agree with you on that. I think I might be in the minority on the finding that you need. So, even if we're going with the finding, I'm not sure I'm in a place where I could say, without knowing where a car is going to be pulling in and out, that this isn't substantially more detrimental.
And I understand that.
So, that, I think that's best-case scenario for you.
But where are we on the aesthetic question? That's what I want.
And I think you know where I stand, but it's moot if, if, maybe I'm the most likely to vote in support on the board right now.
You're not voting.
Well, we all vote, but.
But you're not. The three votes that count, and I just want to understand this.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
John, Sarah, and Ed, right?
Yep.
Okay.
You either need two out of three or three out of three.
Right, and so.
But I don't think you have really any chance if you can't get us over the more detrimental, less detrimental garage question.
I'm happy to continue this hearing on that issue, but if two out of three are not in support on the issue of aesthetics, then what are we doing?
And so, we're clear on that issue. What would be the condition that you would propose if one of us was going to make a motion on that issue?
I would propose that the applicant is granted the finding as requested, okay?
Subject to?
Upon the specific condition that the garage safety aspect of the house is reviewed and meets the satisfaction of the DPW.
Of the location of the garage?
However you want to call it. We're talking about the ability to access the property, get in and out safely. That's the issue.
What if they say can't at all?
I think we got a problem, right? I'm willing to, I'm willing to go there.
Yeah, well, you're trying to tie your hands and saying, you guys can't consider anything else, no matter what comes up. You're done considering, you're making a decision on it, what you got today.
What else do you want from me?
I've told you.
What?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see a rendering.
But not everybody agrees with you.
Well, I don't know.
Well, why don't we find out?
I mean, I think we have had a couple people say, you know, the width of.
I care about the three of you.
Well, you know.
John, what do you think on the issue of aesthetics?
Yeah, the aesthetics, I'm not concerned about. I'm more concerned about the parking and the safety of that.
Do you think that, do you think I need to provide a plan?
I think if we needed you to provide a plan, we should put it in the application.
Say again? Say again?
I think if we needed you to provide a plan, it should have been in the application for the permit.
Ed?
I believe that there are cases that come before us where a plan is appropriate. Examples would be where, well, example is when they came for a special permit for a microbrewery. I really wanted to know what that was going to look like. That's unusual for us. I don't think for single families, it's generally necessary. I can, I, there were, have been some cases where I did think it was necessary. In this case, I need to have some understanding that there will be appropriate use of the sub-first floor area, basically, the area under the house where the stilts are. It's reasonable because of the elevations that are presented, that it's going to be large enough to put a car under. If it was wide open and the stilts were all there and all you had was, you know, semi-permeable material, I'd have no problem, because basically, I don't think it would look very good. But basically, an automobile in there would be able to look the full length of underneath the structure and see, and people walking on the sidewalks could see that a car was navigating the way. I think it's more practical to be able to have an enclosed garage with the blowout panels for flood that's necessary, and I think there are ways to do that safely. I'm willing to either come up with, as I said, some sort of a statement that makes the midpoint of the garage at least eight feet off the layout, which puts it like 10 feet off the road, or, or if throwing it over to the DPW, I can live with. That would be at the time that the structure was, the design was made, that the DPW had, could weigh in and veto a plan in conjunction with the building inspector.
And are you saying that if a car backs out of the garage, you don't want it backing out of the garage and back directly into the street?
No, in an ideal world, as you simply want, before, before a car is crossing that sidewalk or getting out onto the roadway, that the driver can see what they're driving into.
Let me see if I could, I just had a conversation with Mr. Como. He'd be willing to stipulate to the eight-feet midpoint scenario that I don't fully understand, but apparently both of you do, so...
I think that's irresponsible. We, you know, Ed is an extremely intelligent man, but I'm telling you, again, he's not, he's not a designer of, you know, garages and parking spots.
I'm going from the standpoint of the neighbor, the driver next, the house next door is eight feet at the midpoint.
How do you know if there weren't other considerations, Ed? You can't just, it's not a cookie cutter situation. Elevations, everything is required, that's closer, I just...
And if they agreed to that, the backing out, and not backing out situation would be as good as it is at the current property.
But it's not the same exact situation. It's just not.
You're right, it's not the same exact situation. I'm not, I'm not sure that's required.
I don't know either, but it's not my thing.
I think we're all agreeing for the same thing, because, you know, we've got small kids, we've got grandkids on the way, so we want to say, we want safety as well. And when we were presented with the, you know, the limitations in terms of where we could build, we discussed with our architect in detail, how do we make a safe exit? And that was when Paul went to that little triangle, that triangulated side garage setup, which would, which is actually what we're gonna do anyway. We had to think it through, because it's, it's normal, we want it to be safe, we really do. That's the intent.
What about...
What about the eight-foot center point setback and blessing by the DPW?
Yeah.
That's fine.
The eight-foot center point setback gives you a guide on...
We use Ed's idea, which the applicant is okay with, and it gets the blessing of someone who knows what they're talking about.
After the rendering, after the drawings are made and the design has come through, the DPW has veto power or consultation power before it can be, a permit can be granted.
We approve the building envelope or vote on the building envelope, subject to the condition that the garage door center point needs to be eight feet back from the property line, and the DPW blessing a rendering showing that.
I still think you need a special permit, and if you want a finding, I mean, I would like to have advice of town council whether or not this is a situation we're finding. And, you know, let's put it this way, if town council says you can get a finding, you've probably got two votes.
And what about the issue of aesthetics?
You know where I stand on the aesthetics. I'm not gonna change my mind, Jeff. But if, if aesthetics, if you, if you're entitled to a finding, I guess aesthetics go by the wayside.
Yeah, so...
Because you'll get it without, you'll get it without the, you know what concerns me more than anything? Is your unwillingness to provide some sort of a rendering of what this is gonna look like. That concerns me. That concerns me that, you know...
I'd like to suggest the concern is legitimate, because we just about killed a project on the previous applicant, because they did provide a rendering.
I wasn't happy, you know? You just, you know...
Sarah, you're concerned about whether or not a finding is appropriate? That makes sense. Should we vote on the finding and make its...
If you vote on the finding and you're wrong, town, town has to sue us. Do you understand that?
Make the vote contingent upon your determination with town council.
But town council, either, I've, I've been involved in instances where town council is wrong, where courts disagree with town council. I think...
I'd like to know one of those, because every time I've seen one on here, town council's been right on.
I, I think, I think that what I'm willing to do is to have the board entertain a motion like was discussed, and I'm willing to litigate it if for some reason it's appealed.
Well, isn't that great? But you know what? The town pays for, to litigate it.
The town doesn't pay, all they do is have town council enter an appearance and then they sit back and don't do anything.
You, I said, if, if, if a finding is made, and it's the wrong thing, a special permit should have been required, the town will be forced to, yes. This one I know exactly on, I had this exact conversation, okay? And I think it's, it's, I'm surprised at your, well, perhaps that shows the, the level of your, of your confidence in your position. Because if you're, if you're solid in your position, wait 30 days, let town council weigh in whether or not a finding is appropriate, and if a finding is appropriate, you'll get, you know, more likely than not, you're gonna get it.
Sarah, you're ignoring the fact that it's 30 days, that they don't get to build. It slows their process down 30 days, and winter is coming.
This has been sitting, you know, that cannot be my concern, that, that building has to take, take a certain amount of time. It could have been brought last month, you know?
So you'd like town council to confirm that 810.2 says that we need to make a finding?
I think there are several issues that, and that one is the primary one at this point. I think you need a special permit. I think it is, it is wrong to...
Where in your bylaw does it say you need a special permit for that?
I mean, 810.2 says finding. I, I just don't understand the discrepancy.
You have, and you know what? It's 11 o'clock. What are you gonna do? What do you want, Jeff?
I want, I want the vote. I want, I want the board to entertain a motion such as what we discussed. That's what I want.
Okay, it's 11 o'clock. Do you guys want to take the vote? I, I think it's, I think it's against, it's against what the board should be doing. I think we should, at the very least, we should be seeking town council. I think we got some significant issues with this project. There's safety issues, there are aesthetic issues, there's issues of detriment to the neighborhood, given the size of the building on the lot, given the fact that you have no clue. You might have a box, maybe this time it'll be a white box, but maybe this, you know, maybe this is gonna be a box.
It could be neon yellow, we don't have any purview over whether or not it is. They're allowed to paint whatever color they want.
They can paint it whatever color they want, and, but, 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 they're asking special permission from this board for a permit, and I think we have some obligation to the citizens of this town with respect to the, to the aesthetics of this building. We have, anytime we have seen plans, it has been extremely rare that we have interfered with those plans. Even, I'm telling you, it's not, I'm, this is, I don't make my own judgment of whether or not I think it's appropriate, but I'm telling you, this is a very narrow, and this is gonna look like a flat wall on Jericho Road if that's the way it's built.
How, how it looks is not our purview.
Well, I think also, I mean, they've, they demonstrated from the beginning, working with the town, they got the parking lot situation squared up. They've spoken with the neighbors tonight, they have built the house next door, we've got a track record of what was done. It's been there. They're willing to work with us on the parking situation and design to kind of come up with a solution for that. I think we're all headed in the same direction. They're looking for our guidance to say, okay, let's get it with DPW. I understand their reluctance not to submit a plan there, because you go through a lot of work to put a plan together for a structure, siding, windows, whatever you're gonna do, you could spend thousands of dollars there, and then it could come in here and get blown up, and you have to start all over again, and what did you do? It's, it's very, especially in the residential community here. They've got some other houses, yes, you don't always like all them, some you like, some you don't, but I think they've, again, demonstrated that, you know, they have put their due diligence into proceeding with this.
I think the, the challenge, we have to look at the, I, first off, I don't think this board has architecturally view under any circumstances. If it affects safety and use, yes, but architecturally view, no. And I don't like going down that road, and I don't want to get into a situation where applicants are reluctant to show us things, because they're afraid we're gonna say, this is not attractive. I used to cringe every time a former chairman would say, I hate vinyl siding. Not your decision. It's, some vinyl siding, it's hard to tell from a distance, but he hated vinyl siding. But the other thing was, let's look at this parcel in relation to its neighboring parcels. 20 years ago, when you drove down that street, you had that three, the six parcel, that six-unit...
Fire trap.
...mess, which was not attractive. Now, you may not like the elevated building, but FEMA requires the elevated building that's there now. It's, I think, a good deal more attractive than what was there. It's rather large. The, the six units were small units, stuck in a mess of a building. The large four-unit condominium is, I think, more attractive, but large, significantly larger than this building's gonna be. Next to it is the Como's house at 167. It was an empty foundation since 1978, or, maybe, yeah, it came down not long afterwards, and then they put the foundation, and I don't know what happened. But it was ugly to see that unfinished parcel. Someone came along and did something with it. Great. This is another situation where we have a small antiquated structure that's no longer going to be used as a home or renovated in its current size. There's going to be a larger parcel, a larger structure there. And the applicant before us has demonstrated a willingness to work with the board, to consider our concerns about safety, and I think it's completely appropriate to vote it. I don't think all your concerns are, I agree with, except the one about aesthetic. I don't think we have a right to find that a proposal is inappropriate based on our opinion of aesthetics, it's not in our bylaw. Safety, yes.
Frank?
I agree with what Ed just said. I've said that the last hearing on the, on the aesthetics, and I think we should just work out some situation with respect to the getting in and out of the garage that's safe. That's, that, you know, and I don't think, no matter what, unless we over-engineer it, that I think the board is capable of making some basic judgments that, because we all drive out, back out of garages and things like that, that, you know, with certain, within certain parameters, yeah, this is a much safer proposal than just having a straight flat backing out into the road, which I think everybody agrees is not a great idea.
Let's make it unanimous.
I think you raised an interesting question about the finding, but you don't care what I have to say about that at this point.
Well, maybe this board doesn't even want to know the answer to that question, and the way to avoid the answer to that question is by...
But we don't want to know what the right thing, like, can I quote you, that you've just suggested to the board, we should not do things the right way?
That's not what he suggested.
I'm asking.
He suggested the board...
Not at all.
You know, we want to know what, no, we want to know what, you know, I, every person who, who cares about this board wants to know what the right thing to do is.
I understand what you're saying, though.
Your bylaws...
Sometimes, sometimes issues are best left addressed for another day.
Yeah, well, I think this is the death.
I follow your reasoning on the finding issue as well, so I'm, Anthony's concern were legitimate when we got to the, when we actually parsed out the words. The words are clear, and I think if we meant it to say it something else, we should have said something else. And we have voted three to one on issues of findings in the past.
Two to one.
I mean, two to one, and issues of findings in the past. We've even gone to situations where the board was conflicted, and we've chosen to vote at a five, we voted five members with a dissenting or a abstaining member, and been able to move forward. Instead of holding applicants up for extended periods of time, it just, it's not practical. It's not, we are, we have a responsibility to the town and situat to enforce their bylaws, but we have a responsibility to our applicants to secure their rights as property owners under our bylaws.
And we have an applicant who's willing to agree here and now to essentially an eight-foot setback of the center of their garage door. There's a chance that if we continued it, they'd deal with the delay that they don't want to, and the DPW could say, they could put it right on the line, it's not any worse than any of the other houses down there.
We're getting at least a minimums eight foot setback at the center point.
Yeah, I think, everybody wins.
I'll make a motion.
Bob, no, Bob has to...
Just one quick comment. I've only been here in this kind of position a couple of years, but I'm not aware of the DPW ever weighing in on the access to or circulation pattern connected with a single-family residence.
But isn't it basically a driveway issue?
It's a driveway issue, but it's a single-family residence, private driveway.
I can, I can relate to a situation with a zoning board. Prior to my being on the board, I think this was probably about 1981, on a 50-foot frontage lot, we're concerned about drainage, so they made the decision, continuing upon the DPW approving a drainage plan.
Yeah.
And the DPW was ballistic. They wanted nothing to do with approving a drainage plan. They do not want to be involved with single-family homes.
I'm foreseeing a similar situation.
So that's an argument for, they're agreeing to the eight foot, let's take the eight foot and get this done. Require AM to set it back more than eight feet, there's at least an argument that that's going way above and beyond what's standard and common in the neighborhood, and that requiring a setback of more than eight feet goes above and beyond what is required, so this is not more detrimental. If they're willing to give us the eight feet, I, my only concern about the application dissolves. That's what I could say.
Yeah, if we get the safety issue resolved, it becomes an odd issue. We'll take care of that house, we'll send it out. I mean, we could look at the example next door, what they did, and that's, that took care of it.
So you're looking for a finding, just a finding?
Just a finding.
Right now?
Yep.
I think it'll take a special permit if we want to get that one.
I would love a special permit, but if I get, if I get a finding, I'm happy to roll with that.
I'm not asking for a motion. That's fine, that's fine.
I'll sit here and stare at you. I did go to the Springsteen show last night, and I'm exhausted, but...
Motion that the board find in regards to the application for 169 Jericho Road. Motion that the board find that the existing property is non-conforming as to lot area and front setback, is that it?
Frontage.
And frontage, and that the proposed improvements shown on the plan prepared by Ross Engineering and dated August 15, 2016, shall create no new non-conformities, shall reduce the front yard setback non-conformity from five feet into the roadway, down to, I'm sorry, half a foot into the roadway, down to a half-foot setback, and that to the extent the proposed improvements create an intensification of that front yard setback or the lot area non-conformity, that such intensification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, conditioned upon the finding including a condition that any garage door located or other enclosed parking space located on the ground level or sub-first floor of the premises be set back so that the center point of said door or enclosed parking space is at least eight feet back from the front property line.
We're good? We're good.
She could say the center point of a vertical, on the vertical plane of the-
The center point on the vertical plane.
So we couldn't have a tilted garage door.
I recorded this because I don't-
I think actually, under wiretapping laws, you have to let us know.
No, I just-
You just did.
Before you record it.
Second.
Motion, and second discussion.
Any discussion? I think we've discussed it to death.
And I do very much appreciate the discussion, and y'all being here so late.
Chairman didn't want to call for the motion, doesn't want to call for the vote. I will call for the vote. I'll ask that the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Abstained?
Thank you.
Two to one.
Thank you very much.
And do you need to have us to do that Walden Woods ASBIL? Annie?
No.
Do we need to do that Walden Woods ASBIL?
Yeah, they've been waiting around.
They're back there?
Annie?
I think he left.
There he is.
We voted a finding that the applicant, what the applicant liked to do is okay.
He gets to build what he wants, whatever.
Two to one vote.
But it was a two, it was a two to one vote. If it was a special permit that was needed for this, then it would have needed to be a three, a unanimous vote. The applicant runs the risk that someone says, no, it really should be a special permit, and therefore seeks to have the, he'd have to come back and seek a special permit at that point. But he's confident that it's finding, not a special permit, and a two to one vote is sufficient to grant a finding.
You're a good teacher.
My God.
It's quite apparent.
We got one more.
Oh, God.
Putting it all together.
Do we have to pull everything out? What do we, what do you need? You don't need to do all that, yeah, do you?
There's nobody else. There's just us.
The ASBIL as presented by email?
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't have to pull them out, really. I don't think you do.
And the ASBIL review as presented by our consulting engineer?
Yes. And he didn't even want a stamp copy. He said he was all set.
I've had an opportunity to review the email.
You know what, Ed? Let's let Annie read it. Let's at least maintain some formality in that. Bob is gone, but I don't think Bob needs to be here.
Request for ASBIL approval, Walden Woods LLC comprehensive permits, build or ASBIL plans for approval.
Okay. And so we've received a letter from the engineer, who's reviewed it with Neil, who says everything looks good. That's my understanding.
And you're presenting tonight the same plans that were emailed to us and to the board?
Yes. And I have a couple of questions for the board.
Okay.
From the applicant.
About what?
Well, he's looking to try to get some bonding money back.
Okay. Is my understanding, the only bonding money you can get back is the $55,000 that you bonded for completion of the-
Standback place.
Right.
There's also a $10,000 bond that was not spelled out to the dollar amount in the conditions. It was a bond for work in the public ways with the DPW.
Okay. And I, yeah.
And that was $10,000.
Right. And I hate to tell you, I haven't heard from DPW that that can, well, this is what I suggest. We can condition approval of that on approval by the DPW that the work has been done, but we haven't received notification from DPW that it's been done.
Okay. All right. So the board is basically allowing me to approach the DPW and move forward on getting the bonding money back, basically?
Right, right. I don't know how formally that has to be done to tell you. They must have to sign off on it or something. But if DPW signs off that the conditions of the bond have been met, I think we can condition return of that bond by, with approval from DPW that indeed the conditions have been met. I just have not, I've just not been, DPW has not told me, or the board is, my understanding, that that's been true. I understand the $55,000 bond, the conditions have been met.
Okay.
Anything else you're looking for?
Just approve the ASBIL.
Okay. So, we just-
Motion to-
Yeah.
Motion to approve the ASBIL submitted for Walden Woods LLC comprehensive permit sent by email and shown, I don't have the plan number yet. The plan number we can reference-
Or dates. They're probably dated.
Yes.
He's not that good.
September 11, 2016.
Dated September 11, 2016.
Sealed and certified on September 13, 2016.
Sealed and certified, September 13, 2016.
And for return of the $55,000 bond?
There's two bonds, for return of the bonds upon approval.
Only one of them needs approval by DPW, the $10,000, the approximate $10,000.
Also, the $55,000 is approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no, that's the motion. But that's my understanding from Neil, right, that the $55,000 can be released.
Okay.
Motion to release the $55,000 bond and the second $10,000 bond to be released upon final approval from DPW.
Okay. And I just would, I think we need to insert the, because he says it's not exactly $10,000, so the approximate $10,000. Didn't you just say that?
That's what they told me, was $10,000. What, the condition did not exactly spell out any dollar amount. It just says that we had a post of bond with DPW.
Got it. I'm sorry.
The dollar amount we posted was $10,000.
Yep. Okay. All right. So we have a motion. We have a second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm submitting two copies of the ASBIL for your records.
Okay. Do those have to be signed by us, by me? No?
I'm not sure. I don't want to do it.
Okay.
I'm not going anywhere.
Move to adjourn.
All favor?
She wants minutes.
Minutes, minutes, minutes.
Seems like all of us. Motion to approve the August minutes and July minutes, which were previously circulated by Annie via email.
What changes?
All favor?
Aye. I'll second it.
Oh, that's, that works.
All of us are tired?
Yeah. Go. Motion-
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Aye.